Michael Hudson from Christ Independent Methodist Church and our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Goddard. If everyone would rise, please.
Let's pray together. Gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful for another day. We know, dear Lord, that every day is a gift from thee and thee alone, and we praise you that you've given us the opportunity to be here. And, Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for the men who have given of their time to serve and to serve our community. I pray, dear Lord, that your hand of blessing would be upon them. Father, I pray, dear Lord, that you'll give them the wisdom that can only come from thee as they make the decisions that will involve our county. Father, we do pray for our county, dear Lord. We know that there are many within our county line that are hurting and going through difficult times. Father, but we know, dear Lord, that you can bless them, you can heal them, you can strengthen them, and we pray, dear Lord, that your hand of blessing would be upon them. Father, we pray that you will bless our nation, that you would protect our nation, that you'd watch over us, and we pray, dear Lord, that you will protect our men and women who are serving our nation around the world today. We pray, Father, that not only would you bless them and protect them, but, Father, we pray that you'll bless their families back home and just be ever so close to them and give us a good day today. In Jesus' precious, holy, and wonderful name do we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You'll join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I want to show Commissioner Goddard set the timer for Reverend Hudson for five seconds, I think. That was a fine prayer, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We do have an item on our agenda, and after that, then I want to take a point of privilege, if you don't mind. Item number two, approval over a minute from November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Proper motion by Commissioner Libley.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens on this one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign the ayes, have it. We have our distinguished state attorney in our office, in our house today, Mr. R.J. Larizzo. If you'll come up, he would like to bring greetings and talk about an item on our agenda. So, good morning. We know you have a tight schedule, and we don't want to keep you too late, sir.
Good morning, and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. First, I want to say what a pleasure it is to be here today and to be able to chat with all of you. It's been a while since I've seen some of you, and I want you to know that Putnam County is a special place, and I feel privileged to be your elected state attorney. I'm here today because the child protection team has an item on your agenda. I think it's listed as E on your consent agenda for agreement for professional services between Putnam County. Oh, excuse me, that's the wrong one, D.
Right.
Let me get that right. I just want you to know that it is so important that victim, child victims of sexual assault have a place to go for forensic interviews and for medical examinations here in Putnam County. If not, then they have to travel to other counties, other jurisdictions, on top of having the trauma that they've experienced in being sexually assaulted. The folks that run these programs through the University of Florida, and I know some of them are here today, are excellent folks who care, they have quite passion for what they do, and my understanding that this is something that the commission is willing to renew, and I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate that because there's not a more precious asset to us as members of a community than our children. And I just wanted to speak in support of that and answer any questions, if any of you had any.
Commissioners, any questions for our state attorney?
No, just accolades for our local staff and R.J., and this is a very important issue, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Have a wonderful day.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, we're going to allow our moderator, Mr. Terry Suggs, is going, we're going to open up the floor for nominations of chairman and a vice chairman. And while Terry's coming out front, let me say that two thousand and seventeen was a great year. Lot of struggles, lot of challenges for us. We learned a lot of things this year, and I was honored to be your chairman. It's a lot of work, but I took it with your help, and it's just a pleasure serving these fine men that sit up here and look at this county as a whole and make decisions based on the county as a whole. And we know there's individual parts, but it has truly been a blessing to serve this past year. So, Mr. Moderator, you have a statement that you need to read?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And if you would, just briefly, I'm going to read the process itself for the record, and then we'll go through the nominating process for our new chair this morning. The moderator will open the floor for nominations. Nominations do not require a second. If only one name is placed in the nomination, the moderator will ask for a motion to close the nominations and to elect the nominee by acclamation. A second to the motion and a vote will follow. If more than one name is placed in the nomination, the moderator will ask for a motion to close the nominations, a second to the motion, and a vote will follow. The moderator will then ask for a show of hands in support of the nominees in order in which they were nominated. The moderator will acknowledge the newly elected chairman, and the same procedure will follow for the election of the vice chair. So, with that said, I will go ahead and open up the floor for any nominations for the chairman's position.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Vice Chairman Buddy Goddard as chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second?
We have a, we have first.
We have one, but I move nomination cease.
With a nomination of Mr. Goddard for chair, with a second by Commissioner Chip Libley, and a closing of the nominations by Commissioner Terry Turner.
Show hands.
A show of hands, if all in favor of the motion. Looks like it's a unanimous decision, Mr. Goddard. Congratulations.
Thank you. We take it. I would like to nominate Commissioner Bill Pickens for vice chair.
Second?
We have a nomination for Commissioner Bill Pickens as vice chair from Commissioner Terry Turner, and a second from Chairman Larry Harvey. Do we have any further nominations? We'll close the nominations, and we'll go ahead and go for a vote.
Show hands.
Show hands.
Good deal.
Again, unanimous, congratulations, Commissioner Bill Pickens. Now, as a point of order, before we actually change seats, if I could ask Chairman Harvey if he would join me here at the podium, and commissioners, if you would come down front as well? Absolutely. There seems to be an ever-evolving duties and responsibilities with the office of county administrator, but this is one of those duties and responsibilities that I'll take great pleasure and pride in as your newly elected county administrator, to be able to present you, Commissioner Harvey, with your gavel for your service this past year as chairman of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. And thank you on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, the county staff, the county administration, as well as the citizens of Putnam County for your job well done and for your service. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And if we could get a picture with Miss Yvonne?
Yeah. Sure. Big smiles. One more. Fabulous.
And now, I assume my last duty and responsibility this morning will be to oversee the changing of the gavel here. So, congratulations, Commissioner Goddard, as you are now chairman, Goddard, and congratulations to Commissioner Bill Pickens as the vice chair. Thank you so much, and look forward to serving with each of you this coming year.
Want me to take Bill's seat?
I'll have to recess to get all this stuff.
Yeah, why don't we recess?
That's my first duty. Let's take a short recess for three minutes.
Prior to that, you've got some blue cards there, and one of them is concerning an item on the agenda, and the other one is item H. Public Works pulled that item, they found an error in the contract, and they would like to pull that item. So, item H is not part of the consent agenda today. And there's one there that has an item specific on it when you get to that item.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, the first card I have here is Johnny Counts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thought I waited long enough to put it to the back of the line, but I guess they go to the top and you wait to the end. Good morning. My name's Johnny Counts. I live in Cracker Swamp, Florida, and I haven't had a chance to be able to come to these meetings lately, but I wanted to come here specifically to make a special welcome to our new commissioner, Terry Turner. I helped Mr. Stillwell with his election and spent some time with him, and I believe that in the spirit of those that elected Commissioner Stillwell, I think that the appointment was a good one, for Mr. Turner to carry on that voice of the people. I also wanted to take the time to present to you a pocket constitution. I didn't get a chance to do that whenever you were sworn in. It was a little bit hectic that morning, but I wanted to take the time to do that, and I want to share some words with you. I have been studying the Constitution the past few years, and it has really become a passion of mine. George Washington said, "The power under the Constitution will always be in the people. It is entrusted for certain defined purposes and for a certain limited period to representatives of their own choosing, and whenever it's executed contrary to their interests or not agreeable to their wishes, their servants can and undoubtedly will be recalled." The Constitution is and always was the law of the land. No state, no ward, no township, and no person has more authority than the Constitution. What is not in the Constitution, the states and local municipalities can add to their hearts' desire via the Tenth Amendment. The founders felt the distinction of the delegated powers was sufficiently clear, that the three branches of the federal government were strictly limited to specific powers and only those powers. Initially, Madison and others did not believe a bill of rights was necessary. That the Constitution sufficiently explained the separation and limitations of powers, but conceded to the anti-federalists to gain approval. The law of the land, Article Six, is very clear. This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby. Anything that the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding its, judges in every state shall be bound thereby. As a result of ratification, the judiciary at every level was bound with a legal definition of bound being accountable, answerable, called by duty, chargeable, committed, constrained, destined, engaged, forced, having no alternative, impelled, liable, necessitated, obligated, obliged, pledged, pressed by duty, required, responsible, restrained, tied, under a vow, under compulsion, under necessity, under obligation, the power limitations of the Constitution. So, the laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding, or in spite of laws in any state to the contrary of the Constitution. So, can you imagine what we would be without that bill of rights? I'd just like to ask you to learn of this. As citizens, it's our duty to know it, but now as elected officials, it's your job. And if you apply these principles and precepts the way the founding fathers wrote them with their intent and go to this first before any of our liberties or freedoms or anything else is up for a vote and pray and ponder on it, I believe everything will be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counts. Thank you for always putting the citizens first. Mr. Johnny Greer?
Yes, I hope I can do this. I have a fear of speaking that goes back to single teacher or one teacher elementary school days in North Carolina, which is where I'm from. In nineteen ninety-nine, my wife and I bought a nineteen seventy-three trailer down here in interlock in one twelve Tempest Street, and she has multiple, about six different critical heart issues, and she can breathe better and winter better down here when we're able to come. In two thousand and four, a lady that lived next to me had a nineteen sixty-eight single wide that she had moved in and was trying to restore livable. She didn't get it done, and she offered it for sale to us, and January the tenth, two thousand and five, we bought this trailer. It's, that area has, it doesn't have, it's restricted to just septic tanks, and you have to have public water on it. No problem until two thousand and thirteen, when this FGUA bought AccuWater out, and they started billing us for water at one ten Tempest Street, which is a single wide next to us, even though it's not a livable trailer, and we were, we bought it with the hopes of restoring it and being able to use it for ourself or family, but health and other problems, it didn't work out. We never got it done. This water company, when they started billing us, I disputed it, and they said that when Putnam County sold AccuWater, that they had an interlocal agreement with the county, and they could bill us, that they had a meter there, which the lady asked to be removed in two thousand and four, but whether it's there or not, I haven't, it's covered up with sand if it is. But anyway, to make a long story shorter, which I'm going to have to do, it, now we have a lien against that property for an excess of six hundred dollars. Last year, we got to come down here only three weeks. This year, we were able to come the eighth of October, and the following Friday, I went to the courthouse and it took out a small claims charges against this company, scheduled for a meeting Friday. Right now, it's scheduled here in the Putnam County courthouse, but we've got a letter last Friday that it has to be moved to Leon County, and I don't know where it's going to be or not. But anyway, I've been really disappointed. I didn't get a little bit of help from the county commissioners. I do not know where the county has an interlocal agreement or not. They do, they got a legal right probably to do it, and I'll lose my case. But I have talked to Mr. Harvey on the phone more than once, and actually, he must have found out that we were back the week following our trip to the courthouse, because he sent some people to look at our trailer. I told him previously that it was for sale. It's been on the market, but I haven't found, both of them have been, but I haven't found a buyer yet that I could accept. Actually, hadn't even had a written offer, but anyway, it, to me, I have a Constitution problem, too. To me, the state of Florida and our national government guarantees me some rights, is owning a property, unenable rights, and I feel like they've been violated here. But don't ask for your help or anything, but I do think that owing it to other people, that you need to, if I'm right in the way I read this, and if they don't have an interlocal agreement, they don't have any right at all to charge me. But whether I win this case, I'm a poor person, but it's reasonable, own these old trailers and try to get down here when we can. You take my tax money. I would like for you to do a little something for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I address some of that?
Yes.
Mr. Suggs, you have some information on that. You and I had a meeting with that private water company, and you might, could explain to Mr. Greer what we do have. We do have an interlocal agreement, an old one, and they were more than accommodating to work with us on other issues, so, you know, you might want to address that.
Yes, sir, I can do that, Mr. Chair. Actually, is it Mr. Greer?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Greer, if we could have a conversation possibly in the next few days, I'll be more than happy to sit down in my office with you and share what I have, and maybe we can come up with some options and maybe some conversations I have with FGUA to see if we can give you some assistance. But we do have an interlocal agreement with them. We've had this conversation recently, since I've been appointed here, but I'll be more than happy to schedule some time to sit down at your convenience to see what we can do to offer some assistance. We will, we will look and see what we have. I believe we do have an interlocal. It was, it was just discussed within the last month or two. I will certainly get everything that we have packaged up when we have our meeting, and I'll give you all the assistance we can give you on the county side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jeff Ross?
Good morning. Jeff Ross, low on your Carr Street placate. First off, congratulations to Mr. Harvey for a successful year, and congratulations to Mr. Goddard for his new position. You guys have about twenty-six opportunities to effect change over the next year, and I would encourage you to take every opportunity you can to do so. I've been speaking with groups lately about having nighttime meetings with the commission. Most recently, at a Republican Executive Committee meeting, there was a general consensus that if the meetings were at nighttime, more people would be able to participate. As a business owner, it's difficult for me, not impossible, but it's difficult for me to come here and spend my business day looking at or working with the commission on items to help the county grow or improve itself. So, I would encourage you guys to take this up this year and try to get nighttime meetings held. I don't think it's an impossibility. It's pretty much the norm with everybody else around us. We seem to be one of the few that meet in the daytime. I became aware yesterday of a meeting that's being held tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and I had several questions. Who knew? What is the meeting about? When did this meeting get requested? Why the short notice? Why was the notice sent out on Thanksgiving Day? It just, it seems to me like if this doesn't have the appearance of impropriety, which it does, and I think you guys need to avoid that at all costs. I know very little about this group, if we understand, it's a political action committee, basically, and I think you guys are going down a very slippery slope if you allow one political action committee to make a request of this commission or this county to have special consideration and not afford that to all interest groups, whether they're a political action or not. I think you guys should take the opportunity this morning to answer the questions, who, what, when, where, and why. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Hotel?
Mr. Goddard, if you would, could, we request the county administrator to give the explanation of this meeting. It's, it needs some sunshine on it because that's, well, if you would, please, sir.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, for the record, this is not a Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting. This is a meeting that was scheduled by a group of individuals, business leaders, civic leaders within our community. You were simply sent an invitation to attend if you would so choose to do so. The reason that the notice was placed was to make sure that we stay in compliance with the sunshine law in case one or more commissioners decided to attend the meeting. Again, I want to reiterate for the record that this is not a Board of County Commission meeting. This is a meeting held by another group of individuals, and you were simply invited to attend. The reason that it was placed out on Thanksgiving Day was I found an error, and I wanted to make sure that error was corrected immediately, so Ms. Gabriel and I came in on Thanksgiving morning to correct the error and upload the new notice on the website so that we would stay in compliance with the sunshine law.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also make a comment. I believe it was about a month, month and a half ago, I was in Mr. Manning's office, and he told me about a group that wanted to meet on the twenty-ninth. That's the information I had. I didn't have any more information than that that I recall, so that's, I actually didn't even put it on my calendar, and I'm actually have a conflict tomorrow morning based on that. So, that's what I know. Okay?
Yes, sir. That's the way I understand it.
Mr. Chairman, I think it needs to be said that the sole reason for this meeting was put together at the request of Congressman Yoho. He requested that this group of people get together with elected officials, if the elected officials choose to do so, and try to come up with four or five items that he could help us work on. That's, that's where this originated from, the first part of it. And the only way that the city officials can be involved in it, or the county, us, is if the meeting's noticed. So, it was noticed by the city, and it was noticed by the county. Whether any of us want to participate here or at the city is strictly up to them.
The question that I would ask then is, would it not be more prudent for this commission to invite them to come here, to keep it completely in the sunshine, have all the transparency, instead of having it at a small meeting room at the college? And I can promise you, I'm as much or more of a business leader than anybody in this room. I don't understand why in the world a small selective group would want to be a voice for Putnam County to a congressional member. I just, I think the commission has an opportunity here to take a stand and tell this group, if they want to be heard, they need to be heard in a public forum so the public can have input. I think this year should be the commission's year to have a lot more transparency, to involve a lot more citizens' participation, but not by having it in backroom meetings at the college on Wednesday morning at nine o'clock in the morning with a few days' notice. Get this thing out. The Small Business Development Center, where they invited this meeting, when I asked, the answer was no. They can affect change. I don't, I just think the commission is going to miss a great opportunity here if they don't invite that group to this commission instead of the other way around. Tail does not need to wag the dog. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Tim Hotel?
Well, that's, Tim Hoteling out of San Mateo, that's sort of a hard act to follow. Just a footnote on it, I sent a email to Mr. Suggs that included a link to an Attorney General opinion that is very clear as to, or I slashed that, it was a, the Attorney General's frequently asked questions pages, and it's very clear that what is required under these circumstances, and you all need to make proper notice and proper access. But you have a lawyer that could probably go to that main page, too. The reason that I stepped up today is I recently heard a, an observation on animal control, which, well, the newer members may not fully know, but it's been a thorn in the side of the county for well over four years, where they're out by the sheriffs and fighting over water and all sorts of stuff. Theoretically, you've got a chunk of swamp that you're going to get permits for and backfill and dump dirt in and take away valuable frontage on high-tax dollar roadways. A theory just got thrown past me that I really think that you all need to say, well, why not? And that's that spec building out in the business park. Wasn't long ago that you had the mouthpiece for the Chamber of Commerce up here in a public meeting and saying that they couldn't market anything in the business park because there was nothing shovel-ready. I believe that was a term from one of your commissioners. It's been out there for eleven years. The dirt floor in this case would provide all kinds of options for throwing in some special requirements. You could end up having, it's so big, you could have a veterinarian section, where I understand there's a couple vets that are kind enough to volunteer their services. kind enough to volunteer their services, and you could provide them the facilities. The building's been up, it's eleven years, you haven't done a dead gum thing with it, there has been zero marketing on it. My question is, why not? And other than, I mean, dollars and cents, pride in ownership. You can have the big animals in there that can, there's room to provide flexibility for your staff. Again, why not?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it has been brought up. Thank you. Mr. Tom Williams.
Tom Williams, 1117 State Road 20, representing the REC. Congratulations, Mr. Goddard and Mr. Pickens, on your new appointments.
Thank you.
One thing I want to say is, is the REC, we worked very hard last, last election to put conservative voices up here on the, on the county commission. We haven't seen, there's, public's input is, they don't think that they've seen a lot of conservative values put forth. So, and along with what Jeff Rawls said back there, some of this stuff needs to really be brought out in the open, and I'm one of the small business owners, too, and I knew nothing about this meeting. I heard about it through the grapevine tomorrow morning. Really have no clue what it is, don't even know if the public is invited. But nothing went out. It seems that we cater to a lot of the large businesses in this county, and, and we forget about some of the small businesses. So, I would like to have that, but, you know, our tax rates went up to the highest they've been in forever up here, with supposedly conservative voices on our county commission. Now, I also, as a businessman, I understand that, you know, the county's in a tough spot, and we have to do something to get it out. We need positive growth, and we're, again, we worked very hard to put conservative voices up here on this county commission, and, and throughout the county, and we can work very hard to change the, to change the, if it doesn't go the way that our constituents would like for it to go. I would, I don't get to do it very often because I don't go, come up here very often. Again, I'm one of the guys that has to work in the morning. I almost missed this meeting with something that happened during work. I would like to congratulate our new sheriff for a year because I think he's done a fantastic job, and I've said it very publicly, the only reason I ran all the time was I wanted to see a good sheriff get into the office. I think we have a great sheriff right now, so. He's doing a good job, and I don't foresee myself running anymore. Plus, I'm getting a little bit older. But I just would like to see more conservative values and see if we can't get this tax rate and everything down and get some different type of businesses. I was told that there's five hundred and twenty-eight jobs in this county, so it's not more jobs that we need, but I think it's more out, more, more different type of businesses to attract outside, outside companies to come in here. Johnny Counts brought up a lot about with the Constitution, and that was some of the stuff I was going to bring up with the conservative voices and stuff, and Jeff Rawls brought up about the meeting. And I would just like sometimes for the small businesses to be involved in this, and if Mr. Yoho brought this up, I think it would have been a great time for the county to, to echo what John, or Jeff said, to let everybody know a little bit faster so we could prepare for it. It's going to be hard for me to get away tomorrow morning, but I'm going to try to do it, but I have no clue what this meeting is about. And I think that's it. Thank you all, and congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Our last one is Valene Stanley.
Mr. Chair, if I could, for the record, just state that this meeting tomorrow is open to the public as required by Florida state statutes.
Thank you.
I'm Valerie Stanley, and I'm with the University of Florida Child Protection Team and Child Advocacy Center, and this is the subject that-
Could you bring that microphone closer?
Sorry. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm here to follow the RJ's appearance, which is pretty hard to follow him. It's on your agenda. I have worked with Mr. Suggs. The Child Protection Team and Child Advocacy Center offers a safe place for children to come and be interviewed and medically examined when there are allegations of abuse and neglect. And Putnam County really led the way several years ago when they secured a grant with, through the sheriff's office, kudos to the sheriff and to his victim advocate, to get a grant to secure a facility to keep children from having to travel to other counties. So, we are here today. We presented a space-sharing agreement to Mr. Suggs. He was generous with his time with me last month to learn about our program and our proposal, and Mr. Manning was equally as dedicated in looking through the proposal. And so we are here just requesting that you consider continuing our location at 507 St. John's Avenue that keeps the services for the citizens in Putnam County and keeps them from having to travel, travel outside for services. And we're just very humbled and honored. I met a few of you last time I was here, and for your dedication to the children and also in your assistance. We have a wonderful collaborative effort with the sheriff's office. DCF is represented here. RJ came here. Kenny's here from the state attorney's office. And we also have some of our staff, and it really enables us to send board-certified pediatricians in child abuse to examine the children down here because we can't afford with our budget to pay rent, but we can't afford to send staff here to a space to give the services to the children. So, on behalf of the children, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a card here for Mr. Ed Kilabru.
Good morning. My name is Ed Kilabru. I reside at 146 Bardin Estate Circle. I try to be a positive voice in everything I do. You know, there's, there's times, as each one of you know, I've talked to each one of y'all, that I can get a little negative, and I know that. But I want to say, I just want to say this, addressing some of the things that have been said this morning. Each and every one of y'all, except for Commissioner Lible, is fairly new at what you're doing. Even, you know, your, your, your captain, if you want to call him that, Mr. Suggs, is, is fairly new at what he's doing here, too. But I wanted to say that so far, what, what you guys have done, I've seen is positive, and you're trying to move forward. And, and I've said this before in this chamber, forward is a motion, and you need to always move forward, even when you're standing still. You need to lean forward and move forward with everything you're doing. Wise man once told me, and this is, this is answering what they're saying about what y'all are doing, that sometimes, you know, to go to the doctor, you got to take your medicine to get better. And I believe with all my heart that what's happening right now with the tax rates and everything that's happening to our county, that we're taking our medicine. That the things that, that are here are things that most of y'all inherited, not that y'all caused. So I just want you to take that into your heart and think about what you're, what you're doing, you're continuing to do. Like I said, forward is a motion, and we need to be continuing to move forward in Putnam County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilabru. And that looks like that will be the end of our public comment. Is there any other public comment before I close it out? Seeing none, we'll close that out, and we'll move to our consent agenda. Mr. Turner, do you have any items that you'd like to pull?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harvey?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lible?
None. Thank you.
And Mr. Pickens?
I'd like to pull G.
And Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, as I understand it, H has been pulled by staff.
Yes, sir.
So that will not be part of what's voted on?
Correct. H is not included. Okay. And you have the floor, Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, just like they had Bob Stender to come up. Yesterday, I had a good conversation with Bob about this, and we'd just like for him to explain the grant process, the difference in the actual bids for the equipment and services that will be provided, and just fill the public and the audience in what's going on with that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Stender, IT Director. This, this particular grant proposal will upgrade our 911 call-taking capabilities. We did some work on this last year. This would complete an upgrade, fully integrating text to 911. This process includes three quotes. You'll notice quite a, quite a cost disparity between the highest and the lowest. We recommend the lowest. It is a complete system. We're, we're not being short-changed by taking the lowest in this case. But this, this is a, an item that is going to be funded strictly to the grant. If we don't get the grant, we will, we will move forward this in the next budget year. So it is an unbudgeted item at this point. It would only go forward if we do get the grant. We feel good about the grant. With the text to 911 feature, the state's pushing that, and we, we fully expect the state to, to, to award this grant. Any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have something to say there, Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. It's been over a year now since I've been able to make a motion, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, and K.
Okay, we have a proper motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
And I want to bring up, just for those that don't know, item K is canceling our meeting in December, scheduled for December 26th. Just so you'd be aware of it. And with that, we'll move on to code enforcement. Got to vote on it.
We need a vote.
Yeah, we need a excuse.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those not in favor, say nay. Okay, our agenda does move. Now, if we can move to code enforcement. Mr. Sammons?
The first case is case 2015-0656, 119 Benjamin. Davis was the original owner, McCord has bought the property. This is a fine reduction request. This was a fire on a house back in 2015. There's a picture of it. Length of time to achieve compliance was two, two years. There are two liens on the property. The owners owned it for a few months. We have worked with the escrow company, the closing company, about the fine, and I sent them a copy of what our recommendation was going to be. I told them that wasn't necessarily what it was going to be, but that's what it was, so that the previous owner of the property wouldn't end up having to pay it instead of the new owner. Staff is recommending that the, the board accepts $639 in lieu of the $14,225 fine plus $100 administrative fee if it's paid within sixty days. Any questions?
Which, Mr., if I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Sammons, we have photographs of the before. The, we're not privileged with the after, but I assume this lot is cleared?
It's cleaned up, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Sammons, in reading stack recommendations, $639 in lieu of $14,225 plus hundreds, $100 administrative fee, is that $739 then, or are we still talking?
It would, it'd be $639. That $100 administrative fee, if you look at the table that's on the back, is included in the, in the cost there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was right.
And the new owner is present.
Okay. Would you like to say any words?
He's terrified.
This is his, Mr. McCord's first time-
Please state your name and address for the records.
I'm Mickey McCord. I did purchase this property, and I have every intent to put another mobile home on there. It is a mobile home subdivision there, and it's just a matter of trying to get my son a place to stay because he's been shacking with his woman and going to his mom's across the street. It's just a matter of, with the grandchildren from my daughter, let them come visit the family. And I'm eventually, hopefully, going to put a mobile home sometime this year coming up. So I'm hoping, since I purchased this property with, trying to get this fine reduced and everything, that I can move further along into getting everything taken care of.
Okay. Sounds like you're going to improve the neighborhood.
The yard, yes.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yes. If I could. So, you, you've read the recommendations from staff, or you talked to Mr. Sammons?
Yes, sir.
And you agree with the reduction from $14,225 to $639?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we think. With that, I'd like to make a motion for approval of staff recommendations.
Second. We have a first and a second. Everyone, do we have, everyone agree?
Signify by say.
Signify by saying aye.
We're going to teach you.
Aye.
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 Anyone disagree? If I see none, motion moves.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. That's it. You got what you came for. Thank you for cleaning that property up.
Next case is 2013-0537, 126 St. John's Court, owner Ava Thomas. This is a request for abatement. You can see there's an old 60's style mobile home in the back there, underneath the trees and stuff. If you see the inside pictures, it's got holes in the floor, holes in the roof. It's just a mess. And it's been a blight to the neighborhood for some amount of time. Staff is requesting authorization to abate this.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sammons, do we have anybody representing the property at this point?
I've not heard anything. I've sent the notice out to them, but I've not heard anything, and I don't think they've been, maybe they're here, I don't know, but they've not, from what I could tell, they weren't involved in the code enforcement process either.
Okay.
They didn't get notice. We had to post the property.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Seeing none, then we'll move it to-
Mr. Chairman?
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Make a motion if we could. So, basically, the magistrate, did he file the lien, or did we file the lien that he recommended?
He authorized us to, to file a lien, and we filed a lien.
Okay, so we have a lien. Do we have a fund in the county to pay for this abatement?
We get a little bit of money every year to do that. I don't know that we have any money currently to do that. Brian's on his way up. This is, will be Brian's swan song meeting with you guys, so.
Well, I kind of hate to vote for a bait if we don't have the money to, to do the abatement.
Right.
Because, and then my, my next question, which may be for you, Mr. Hammond, I'm not sure, but do we, if we, if we're not going to abate, would we want to consider foreclosing on the lien that we have, and then would actually own the property? So instead of abating it and them owning it, and, and we can't sell it or get our money back until some point in the future when somebody's willing to buy the property and pay our lien, we could at least, if we, if we foreclosed on our lien and then abated the property, couldn't we turn around and try to sell the count, the property as excess and get some of our money back?
No, sir. I think you'll, you'll find that's a losing proposition. By and large, when these things are brought to you, the amounts that have accrued on liens far exceed the value of the property. And then, once they're abated, essentially talking about the dirt anyway. It just, it's blue sky. It's not really money that exists. You know, it has accrued. It looks great on paper, but it's not really there. So, what we're trying to do is just recycle the stuff. We have, we have not, we have, we have foreclosed on exactly one property in the last eleven years.
I understand, but if we have a big lien on it, nobody's going to buy it anyhow. And so all we're going to do is have our lien- And so all we're going to do is have our lien on unless they come in and ask for a reduction of the lien. And most people are going to buy a piece of property, probably aren't going to do that in order to buy this low, low of a piece of property. That's why I'm saying, do we have any idea, number one, how much it would cost to foreclose? And number two, how much would it cost to abate? So how much are we going to have to put in this to make it one way or the other?
Right now, and for the last, oh, 18 months or so, we've just been stacking these things up like Cordwood. But we get the approvals, we put them on the list to abate, and, you know, as we get funds, we'll consider abating them. We have, I think this would be probably the 29th property on that list at this time. We have budgeted this year $25,000 for abatements. But again, due to other issues, I'm always hesitant to spend any of that early in the fiscal year because I have no earthly idea what catastrophes will befall animal control or other parts of my budget. So certainly, the county attorney can speak to the costs of foreclosure. I would not recommend that process because again, it's hard to control the cost of that process. And usually, the land values simply don't support it.
Okay. So basically, what you're looking for today is a motion to abate, to place it on the list to be abated if you ever find funds in the future and it works out that we do it.
Yes, sir. I mean, we're, we're putting them on the list. We know where they are. We do not own them.
If somebody wanted to sell a piece of that property in the meantime to a neighbor or whatever, then they could come in and ask us if, for, for a reduction, just like the two that came in earlier today. If they bought it and went in and fixed it up or brought it into compliance, they could make that request, correct?
Yes. It has to be in compliance before any kind of reduction request shows up here. But yes, they could. Under our code, we don't give permits, except in limited circumstances. We don't give permits to properties that are not in compliance. You know, we have that ability. Usually, we'll give permits in cases where they're between a rock and a hard place, where they can't fix the violation without the permit. I mean, that's a different issue. But again, it's a, it's a practical matter for us. We're just trying to get them approved so that when and if we get money, or when and if something becomes such a nuisance that it can be abated. Okay? And also, it gives us the opportunity that if somebody does have a tax certificate on it and does force it to a tax deed sale, that we get a new owner, we notify the owner, and then they take over that responsibility of cleaning it up and recycling it. We do not.
Yeah, but lien wouldn't carry through on a tax deed.
Yes, it does. Our liens carry through.
Thought the only thing carried through was an IRS lien.
No. And as a matter of fact, sometimes IRS liens will not carry through. It depends on how they enforce it. But the bottom line is, these, these tax certificate liens will carry through. These tax deeds.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in real quick and address Commissioner Turner's, a couple of his concerns. As far as foreclosure, there's a few points I would like to make on that. One of the, some of the issues with foreclosure that we need to consider is, first and foremost, is we can't foreclose on homestead. I don't know if that's the case here, but just for informational purposes. And two other points is that when the county acquires the property, that the county acquires all the liability with the property. So that's another consideration. And then finally, when the, when a county acquires a piece of property, it's taken off the tax rolls. So those are some points that I think you all need to consider. As far as being taken off the tax rolls, even, even if the current owner isn't paying the taxes, you know, there is a very active market for tax certificates and tax deeds and whatnot. So, you know, there is always the opportunity for it to, for those taxes to get paid up and even for the county to recover some of its costs in that process.
And please note, of those 28, 29 properties that are, that are on that list, eight of Mark County own currently.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question? Mr. Hammond and Mr. Manning, it seems like with the list that we have and the small amount of funds that we have, I kind of like the way Commissioner Turner is moving in that direction of trying to get these things away from us. Is there any ability for us to go ahead and market those places right now? That, hey, if you want to buy this place and tear down the mobile home like the gentleman behind you did, and, you know, we're willing to work with you. We, all we want is compliance, we want it cleaned up, we don't want to own it, the county doesn't, we want you to own it. Is there any active marketing that's taking place with these 28 or 29 properties right now?
No, sir. It's not in the purview of our department. But please notice, you know, you're speaking of the ones that the county already owns, the eight or so that we own.
Well, it's kind of.
We obviously can't market something we do not own.
Right. I understand.
But the eight that we own, certainly the board can do anything you want to with it.
I'd just like to see these cleaned up, moved out, reproductive, recycled, back into the economy and things would be good. Because waiting on a list really does us no good at all at that point.
We're, we're hoping for tax deed.
I hear you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Where would this list be?
It's just a list we maintain in the department.
Okay. So it's not public record or something like that?
Oh, it's public record. If anybody wants the list, it's just stuff that's out. And again, most of it is still in private ownership and still in various states of.
I'm talking about the eight properties we own. There's a list of those eight properties that the county owns that needs abatement?
Yes, and there are, there, anybody can get a list of what the county owns in total from property praiser.
It just seems to me like if we could get somebody, if, if we've got a lien on it bigger and it's going to cost more to abate it because of our county process than what it, than what it would normally be, that we should offer those eight pieces of property to somebody if they'd come into compliance, you can have them. If you'll just go to, if you'll clean them up, fix them, and then bring everything into compliance and start paying tax on it, instead of it just sitting over there waiting on us to have money to abate it. Is that flawed also in some?
I will not say it's flawed. But again, that's not, that is not our function, or it has not been our function, to market property. We're government.
Okay. I think that may be something that we can look into. Mr. Suggs?
I think maybe we should at some point discuss it in a workshop, Mr. Suggs, and see if we can't start moving in that direction. And if everybody else agrees, maybe we need to discuss what we do with that.
Mr. Suggs has the floor.
Well, I'll certainly yield to the commissioner, absolutely. But my comment was absolutely, we can definitely put this in front of a, the commission in the workshop to discuss the process of moving forward in the future of abatement versus foreclosure and then those dollars that we have budgeted. The, the most interesting thing I've heard this morning, and I'm glad this conversation is being had, is that we are, we actually have money budgeted for abatement. We've got $25,000. Given the fiscal restraints that we've been under for the last few years and those that we've all inherited, I think it's very commendable that we're trying to hold off on, on spending those dollars that are budgeted for abatement to try to plug the hole in the, in the dam where it may burst next. However, this is an issue that we need to address. And if we have dollars budgeted for abatement, I think it would behoove us to go ahead and utilize those tax dollars as we, as the commission sought fit, which was abatement. And we will address our concerns as they come up. But I think we need to look at the list in, in its entirety and come up with a priority list, how it will benefit the community as well as our budget and, and, and all, in the near future, and go ahead and do that. But we can also discuss that at the workshop.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to bring to light, Mr. Manning, there was a couple pieces of property that were marketed and sold back out that the county owned in the last year. And that was a good step in the right direction. And I believe at the workshop, this will be a good step in that right direction also. So.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Did we acquire the properties through the tax lien for, or through the foreclosure process, the eight properties we own? Or did we acquire them through the tax process where nobody bought a certificate, or nobody bought the tax deed and so it reverted back to the county because nobody bid on the certificates or the deeds? Or how did we get those properties?
In essence, and again, if you're familiar with the process, it's the process known as a sjeetment tax deed. That's by and large how we got them. They're, they're homesteaded properties that end up not going through a sale. So after a period of time, the county ends up owning them.
Was there an abatement, was there an abatement process in, going on at that time? Or was there a code enforcement on those eight properties?
In some cases, they may have been on the list, yes. I won't say all of them.
I just kind of have a concern that if, if we're taking properties because they haven't been cleaned up and abated and then we don't clean up and abate them, that doesn't seem quite right to me.
Well, again, we're not taking them. We're required to take them through that process. It's, it's not a choice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then we'll move for approval. Do we have a motion?
I move that we comply with staff recommendation and move this on to be abated, on the list to be abated.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Seeing no negatives, then it moves. Next will be our 10 o'clock certain, planning and development. First on the list would be 17003. And that's Alberto and Teresa Gutierrez. And Mr. John Salmons, you're presenting, correct?
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward with these public hearings, a number of these, particularly the zoning map amendments are quasi-judicial in nature. So two things. First, I'd like to ask the clerk to please swear in any witnesses that will be giving testimony in, in any of, any of these public hearings. And then, secondly, when we get to the zoning map amendments, we would ask disclosure of any ex parte communications by members of the board.
Okay. So is there any? Okay. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this?
We'll do this as, as a whole, so it would be anybody.
They stand and swearing them in.
Yes. On any of these.
Be sworn in.
Matters. It looks like we've got staff for sure that needs to be sworn in.
The staff and anybody that's here that will come up and present, you'll please raise your right hand. Do you and each of you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide today is true and correct to the best of your ability? So help you God.
I do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. First case is small map amendment from Ag 1 to commercial, future land use category. Alberto and Teresa Gutierrez are submitting an application to change the future land use category of the property at 2942 South Highway 17, showing outlined in the blue from Ag 1 to, to commercial. This case went before the planning commission October 11th. And the planning commission recommended that the request to change the future land use classification on the property from Ag 1 to Ag 2 be denied. Second slide here shows the property in red if it were approved for the future land use amendment. There's really no commercial property anywhere close. There's an aerial photograph of it. If you're familiar with it, the Jaffa Road subdivision is over here on the, on the left. Any question by the board?
One, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Salmons, was this ever designated a town center or a rural center?
I don't think so.
Brian or Mike would know more about that, but I don't think so. When we cleaned those up, Brian, a few years ago, we changed the rural centers. Was it just one of them?
Mike Brown, Planning Development Services. No, this was not, Commissioner. This was, this was south of that rural center that was located in that area. There was one in the south end.
I knew there was one somewhere.
This is south of that.
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. When you say there's no commercial near, I do believe about a mile north is a commercial location with a Dollar General on it.
That's correct. It's about a mile north.
Then across the street from that, across the 17, there is rural center located there, I do believe.
That's rural residential future land use category across the street.
Okay.
The primary reason why the staff recommended denial and the planning commission did is because the next case before you is a rezoning of that property to, from Ag to C3. And in staff's opinion, that creates a spot zone. Spot zones are illegal. They're only illegal, I guess, if they get challenged and they go to court. We would most likely lose, but that's why staff's recommendation was what it is. There was nobody that showed any interest in this, either of these two cases at all. So, but if you, if it, if you did approve it, and if you approved the future land use, you should approve the zoning, at that point, it would be rezoned. And if somebody challenged it in court, they would most likely win. But that's not a guarantee either, so. But we've had a larger piece of property south that was rezoned to PUD back in the 90's for a racetrack, if you remember Lightning Ridge. And it was 159 acres. And the judge that heard that case said it was a spot zone. And the county never chose to fought, fight that. So that is on the books as one that is very current to this county.
Okay. And then also, I spoke with Mike Brown a little bit on it, but I have, want your opinion on it, is just a mile south, just in the Volusia County, there's commercial there. But I, I guess you don't consider that because it's in another county?
Well.
And also, there's a, a housing complex right at the county line. The entrance is in Putnam County and then the, the apartment complex is in Volusia County.
Yeah. The housing is residential. And it's, our housing is in, in the rural residential future land use category. When you're talking about spot zones, a mile away is quite a ways. But like I said, the, the board can approve it. It's not, there's nothing that says you can't approve it. It's just if it gets challenged in court, we may lose. That's what staff's recommendation is about.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Salmons, I have a question concerning this property also.
Okay.
With the future expansion of 17 South and four-laning down, and one would have to assume that the road would be going back to the east, that's going to put that road right there on the property line at that point. I, I question why we would not want commercial in that area, being that we want the four-laning to bring economic development to all parts of the county, including that area. So could you address that in any way?
It's certainly something that could be considered. Right now, it's, it's not, you know, we hadn't looked at the, changing the future land use in that area. It could be looked at. But as I said, you can, you can, you can approve the, the commercial future land use thing and then on that, there would be no reason not to do the rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Salmons. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Salmons, what happens to the existing church and I believe a resident that's on this property?
There is a church and residence on there. I believe he still plans to keep those there.
So much to Mr. Harvey's concerns, well, not concerns, but just questions. If the highway, if we did have land acquisitions going on. highway, if we did have land acquisitions going on at that stretch, when they're four-laning, it would, in essence, takes the commercial away and leave the church and the residence from what I saw in the layout here. Is that your opinion?
Well, it's gonna take part of the frontage along seventeen away. I don't know how much they would end up taking. The church is farther back, and so is the house, and then the, the lot is big enough, it's six acres, so to the south there, they could have, they could have their, their car, uh, they wanna sell cars, use cars, so they could do that south of the church on that property and still be away, uh, have a access into the property from seventeen and, and be able to function both ways, I guess.
Okay. One more question, if I could, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Manning, spot zoning, or Mr. Hammond's either one, can we get a general description of that? It comes up in this boardroom occasionally, and it's all over the map.
Hold, hold, hold this case up right here, and you get the perfect example.
Yeah, well, I understand.
Well, that's it. It, it, it's, it's zoning, um, that's approved for a particular piece of property that is, um, completely unrelated to the zoning surrounding the property, basically.
Okay, to be quite frank, we did that for Walmart, and we've done it for other entities throughout the years, and they've never been challenged. What's your legal opinion if we were to approve this in the name of economic development and job creation? Um, I'm, I'm very interested. This is a strange situation. We're on a four-lane highway, uh, no, it's just two-lane. Well, two-lane now, but soon to be four-lane in the coming, in the future, you're right.
Again, Mike Brown, Planning Development Services.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the definition that the attorney gave for spot zoning is correct. Um, we're, they're also requesting a land use change, and I think with the land use change, it makes that, that issue a little more cloudy, because you're making the land use change to commercial, um, to, uh, support, and then the la, then the zoning follows and must be consistent with the land use change. So you're, as a, as the county, if you chose to go that way, as county commission, you are saying, from a land use standpoint, we think commercial is appropriate at that location. Um, and then it would be a logical jump to, um, agree that you are changing the zoning to match the land use that you've decided. I mean, the, where staff's understood that the plans for the four-laning of seventeen, staff's position basically, and I, as the planning manager, I was responsible for, um, supporting that, is that it was probably a bit premature, um, and that's where staff was coming from, uh, at this point, to make that change. Um, the county commission believes differently, that's your, I mean, that's your responsibility.
Let me ask you this.
Yep.
All right, so on this property, we have a church, we have a resident, and now a car lot. What portion, if any of it, or all of it, pays taxes?
Um, I would have to defer to the, uh, property appraiser and the tax assessor on that, because I, the whole parcel will be changed to, if you chose, um, the request, at least from the applicant, is to change the entire parcel to commercial and rezone the entire parcel to C three. Uh, I do not know how, uh, the property appraiser and tax assessor deals with having that mixed use on that par, property.
So I have to go to Mr. Manning now and say, are we crossing the threshold of the quasi judicial sitting we're in right now by asking what would become tax-wise of this property?
Well, we can't, um, those are kinda apples and oranges. Um, the rezoning part is the quasi judicial, um, hearing, but as far as, um, i, if it's rezoned, um, that doesn't necessarily change the, um, taxing characteristic of the property, um, in the property appraiser's perspective. It's the use that it is actually being put to that would dictate. So if it continues to be used as a church owned, owned by a, you know, tax exempt entity, um, the rezoning isn't gonna change anything. And speaking to another issue that, um, Mr. Brown had mentioned, um, he, when he said that changing the future land use, which is what this first case is about, um, you know, is the first step, and then when you rezone and it's consistent with the future land use, the, the statement was that, that kinda supports the county's position that it's not spot zoning, although I don't think that's very strong. Um, I think if you were to change the future land use of the, of an area, uh, didn't include just this property, but it was maybe that whole stretch of properties along that road, and you're, this is what your future vision is for that area, so you change the future land use, and then you start rezoning within the future land use char, you know, um, then, then I think you're okay. You'd probably be okay as far as spot zoning, but in this situation, I don't, I don't believe that the county would have a strong leg to stand on, um, if somebody challenged it as spot zoning, and, and it certainly could become very expensive for the county, not only to defend, um, but also, um, potential liability for the property owner where it was granted, and, and, um, if it were then challenged and, 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 uh, we were to get overturned in court, um, it could get very expensive.
All right, one more question to Mr. Pickens. What's your view on the future land use map in this section of your territory?
Well, definitely, if the, if the four-lane comes through, but that's years down the road, then I would think, you know, definitely would be, um, some commercial activity down there.
You would support commercial?
Yeah, at that point. Yes, I definitely would.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may make a comment?
Go ahead.
I don't really have a problem either way with this, if, if the, we feel like that it needs to go commercial in that area. I just think that the future land use map needs, that part of this ordeal should be that the future land use map be considered for, at, at a future, close future time of being changed in that area, if we deem it to be that it, we should think it should go commercial. The future land use map was drawn by staff and the planning commission many years ago with literally a pencil, and, and the planning commission was told at that time that it would never become the first line of, for development in this county. Well, obviously, that changed.
Yeah.
I know they told them that, 'cause I was chairman of the planning commission when it happened, so, um, or I may have just been a member then, but anyhow, the, uh, I, I think that if we're gonna do it, it's no problem. We just need to consider that that's an area that should go commercial, and then we should ask staff to do a, uh, a staff recommended, uh, future land use map, um, amendment, and then after that, we can always change the zoning as people come in or not, if for whatever condition they come in for.
I don't date far back as you did to the planning commission, but we've done some amendments to that flume, uh, once or twice on the towns, the town centers we were talking about.
Rural centers, yes.
Rural centers, uh, we've kinda reconfigured them based on where population trends were trending, and we did one just not that long ago, didn't we? My, I think you were at regional council, and...
Well, we, the last year effort, evaluation appraisal report effort, which was about five, six years, seven years ago, we, we looked at all those rural centers. Some of them were in just bad spots where nothing was going on. We got rid of those and reconfigured, because most of them were just circles, not...
That's right.
Really considering roads.
It was a guess, like Commissioner Turner said, at the time.
And properties. Um, and just, just a point, uh, to Commissioner Turner's, um, point, just point of information, um, we, staff is presently undertaking our next evaluation appraisal process right now. Um, we were primarily gonna focus on just legislative changes, because that was the only requirement, so we're, uh, but as part of that process, we could start to look at areas in the county where we desire to see growth go. I mean, this may be with, uh, seventeen with the widening, um, out north, north going up to St. John's, maybe a county, maybe another area, um, some areas in East Palatka, maybe other areas, but that may be, we have an opportunity now. We can do it at any time, but we are in that process, um...
We were involved last time, and I, I think we should be involved next time. Orange Mills is a good example. We took it out, I think, and we probably need to put it back now, so that's how fast things can change.
Yeah, um, so I mean, we're not limited to that. We can change it at any time, but we are in that process, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. That, that's good for me, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, as far as future land use, I mean, it really is, we really do need to think of those two things very separately, the future land use and the zoning, with the future land use being more of a, you know, fifty thousand feet view of where, where the, the county sees the growth going and, and how, um, you all want to see the growth directed, contained, um, to what makes the most sense. Um, and that really i, is more appropriately done by, by area as opposed to individual parcel. Now, we have other situations where, um, you've got, um, a future land use map change request followed with a zoning change request. Typically, in those, you're gonna see that the future land use change that's being requested is consistent with something that borders it, so it's basically, um, expanding the future land use area, so, uh, you're kind of tweaking, um, you know, those fifty thousand foot, um, visions you had made in the past, where you drew a circle, and now we're getting kinda zooming in, and we're, we're putting borders on that circle and, you know, bringing it out or pulling it in where necessary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to reiterate the fact that I'm all for development here, and I do believe that when we fly at the fifty thousand foot level, we did fly with a pencil, and now it's time to hone in on that. It's kind of a hard sell when we talk to state leaders about infrastructure in the county, um, and this is areas we wanna see grow, and we're not prepared for that. So this is an opportunity to get the county prepared. When we go out and talk to our legislative people about bringing home money for certain projects, we sure need to be consistent along these corridors that we're asking for funding on, and that's the end of my statement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I could make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, that we move on to public comment, and then we'll go from there?
Sounds good. So we'll move on to public comment?
If you could ask, uh, if the applicant is present to make a comment?
Is the applicant present? Yes. Would you like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Come to the podium.
Oh, the main reason why, why trying to get the, the property, you know, switch...
Excuse me. Name and your address, please.
Alberto Gutierrez, twenty-nine, fifty-two, South Highway seventeen, Crescent City.
Thank you.
And, well, the main reason I wanted to change the property is to, I put a car lot in the, in the property, so that's the only reason why I wanted to switch it to commercial.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it's gonna be possible or not.
So that's, that's really the only purpose, is to open the car lot there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, unless there's any more here, I guess we're gonna move on with whether we're gonna deny, I mean, approve it or deny it.
You have to ask the public for anybody wishing to speak against it.
Thank you very much.
For or against, in that order.
I'd like to ask the public if there's anyone that would like to speak for or against this, uh, application. Seeing none, then we'll move on.
And we'll close the public portion.
Then we'll close the public portion. Bear with me on this.
You're fine, you're doing okay. This would be Commissioner deliberation.
Okay, now it's Commissioner deliberation.
There you go.
Does anyone have anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, I've said all I needed to say, I believe.
I would just like to ask, uh, Commissioner Pickens, because he knows more about that area than I do, does he feel like this would be an area that, that, um, should start to ease towards the commercial side of things instead of just the Ag, civil culture side of things, kinda what it's doing now?
You know, it's hard to, yeah, it, I hate to turn down any business that wants to, you know, to come, if, if the, um, granted, commercial, and, and he did it right, you know, uh, put in the infrastructure and, um, actually, you know, had a car lot rather than just sell cars on the side of the road, on, on the grass, uh, 'cause it's a grass field, you know, wouldn't be for that, but, um, I, I think with, um, the Dollar General just down the street, and there is some commercial, it's a garage just a mile north, um, so I think there was, is an opportunity for some commercial growth in that area. Uh, and there was a, a garage just about a half a mile north of that, um, that has not operated in a number of years, but I think it still might be commercial. So I, I think there's a possibility for this in the area. Um, you know, I don't wanna put the county in a position where we would get sued for a spot zoning, but if we could look at this further of, of moving forward with maybe, um, you know, looking at those areas and, and maybe redesignating them, I mean, at a workshop or how we would do that, I think that would be positive.
Well, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may continue?
Yes, sir.
Um, I think that the decision that we need to make here today is if we think the area should, should go that way, because if it does, then we can move this forward. The whole essence of the future land use map and zoning, obviously, is to keep undesirable things from undesirable places. So if we think that this is a desirable use, it almost has to take place with the, with the concept that that area needs to grow in business, because if we're gonna just stick one little car lot on one little corner because we want one, one little business to open up in Putnam County, then we basically thumbed our nose at the whole, the whole zoning, land use map and everything, unless we think that that area should, should go commercial. Then we're being smart. We're being, we're looking and trying to do things right and expand in the right areas. So I think that's the question, if we're gonna overturn the sta, the, uh, planning commission and staff's recommendation to deny, I think, then we've got to have that, um, we've got to have that, uh, conversation. Do we think that this would be a good place to start? Sounds to me like maybe Commissioner Pickens thinks it might be, so...
Not say we need to overturn staff's recommendation, but I think we need to look at that, um, and I don't know if this is the time and place to make that decision. If it is, you know, um, please let me know, but can we look at that at a future workshop or in a, in a visiting session of, of, you know, uh, different areas in the county to change it?
Sure, and I totally agree with you a hundred percent, but I think that if we pass this today, then that's saying that we believe that in that area, we, we think there should be business, because it's definitely, at this point, would be spot zoning, and the only way to get away from that is to think that we need business in that area. If we do, we're, and then we're being visionary instead of creating spot zoning.
I, Mr. Chair, if I could, um, I share Commissioner Pickens' concerns with stipulations on the property as it stands. I'm a little worried about the residential religious facility slash car lot on a grass lot, I'm gonna tell you. Um, I believe what you're saying, Commissioner Turner, that we should be, uh, polished if we're gonna develop that area, and we should start it with staff recommendations in a direction that they know best, 'cause they're staff and work these jobs five days a week. But, uh, if there's a way to move this forward, that it would accommodate our constituent and, and add to our tax base, I would like to see that. I really would, but I'm really gonna go on, on Commissioner Pickens. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but it's your area, and it's, uh, it's, we need to know what to do there.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think everything starts with a little, little drop of water and ripples out, and, um, you know, if we believe that seventeen is the economic corridor, one of them for Putnam County, then I think that this thing needs to move forward, and we need to come back really quickly and develop a plan for that whole area. And, um, I, I concur that I'd like to see a better facility than a grass lot, but it's a start right now, and we all started small, and... And we all started small and hoped and had a dream that we'd all get bigger. And so that's how I feel about it.
If I could, Mr. Libel brought up some legalities there with the church being on that same piece of property. And, Mr. Manning, you brought up that this could open us to some type of litigation, possibly.
Well, not the future land use change, but the next case, which is related, which would be the rezoning change. From what I'm hearing, if I might just opine here, you know, it sounds like there may be some support for moving ahead to do some future land use changes in this area based upon the vision of what you all see for this area in the future. I'm just going to throw this out there that it may be an option for the applicant if he would like to withdraw this and the next application for now to give you all an opportunity to look at the area as a whole. That's certainly something he could do before you all vote on this. And certainly, it would give you all an opportunity to kind of take a look at that whole area before making the decision that could be detrimental to any individual.
Mr. Chairman, if we were to do that, I think that we need to recess a few minutes and let the applicant... Let the applicant get with staff real quick and see what his options are. I know he can't get with our attorney, but he can surely get with our staff.
Okay. Do you believe five minutes would be enough?
I got one more question, if I could, before we break, and it's from staff, Mr. Brown. Typically, what kind of timeframe are we talking about with flume adjustments?
This one was a one hearing because it was small scale. What I'm hearing would probably be a large scale. So you're talking probably, it requires two hearings, and so you're probably talking with Planning Commission three, maybe four months?
I just wanted to bring that out, because it's not a quick process.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But still with that, I think we should recess and let staff talk with the gentleman and see if we're willing to wait there. I think we all can win here.
With that, we'll recess for five minutes.
Hit your gavel.
We're back now. Mr. Libel, if you could join us? Okay. Now, after our recess, has anything changed? Anything want to come forward to us?
Yes, we talked with Mr. Gutierrez. He's willing to withdraw his application for the future land use change. And I would recommend that we remand the rezoning back to the Planning Commission so that he doesn't have to go through that whole process again, and then they can deal with the rezoning at the same time they do the, that we bring back the future land use changes proposed for that area.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That will save him money?
Yes.
Okay. But we could today, since I think the consensus of the board is to redo that whole area, we could go ahead and approve that today with the idea that we're going to look at that area in the future. And by that time, if there's any challenges based on it, then we should be in really good shape. So it's a commitment of this board whether we want to do it now or let him withdraw and go back.
You can do that. Either way you want to do it.
Is that how you understand?
If I could, there's one thing you need to put in there. One of the things on this piece of property is that it's also a church. Then the church, if the church stays on that same piece of property, that could pose a problem. You know, if it's not separated.
Would the church be separated from the car lot by a different lot line? And I think that's the question that needs to be asked. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have...
Mike Brown, Planning Development Services. That hasn't been discussed yet. It would require, I mean, we'd have to talk to the property owner about that, whether he desired to do that. That was not the... His application did not include that separation. It was for the entire parcel, but it's something we can discuss with him.
Well, Mr. Chairman, why would it need to be, Mr. Brown?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't need to be. I mean, I was just responding to Commissioner Harvey's question.
Okay. Well, I've just had it come up. I've had it come up before that running a commercial business on a church property is an unfair advantage to anyone running a business because it's tax exempt.
Is this property tax exempt from the church?
I do not know if it is. There is a church on there, so I assume it probably is, but I don't know for a fact.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, going into the future, I really like our PUD process because that kind of spells out what you will, won't, how the property is going to look. Wouldn't we be better served, once we get this area identified as future land use, as commercial and stuff like that, to implement some PUDs where Commissioner Pickens had concerns about a grass lot versus a paved lot? And, you know, wouldn't that be where we could address some of that?
That is a definite option for the applicant to rezone to a PUD, especially with the number of different uses on the property.
All right. Thank you.
Article seven of the Land Development Code where we require the parking lot to be paved unless Public Works waived it. So he would have to meet that article.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think there's actually a couple of issues here. One of them is probably this should have been a PUD request to start with because you have multiple uses on the same property. You have residential use, you have a church on the property, and now they're asking for a commercial car lot. And so with everything I've heard, the only thing I'm willing to vote for today is either to send it back to the Planning Commission and decide if that area needs to go business, or does the applicant want to change to a PUD or something like that or uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission, which was denied for all these reasons that we've discussed here today. I hate to turn anybody down. Believe me, I'm a land use advocate, but I just don't know if we can just thumb our nose at spot zoning and all other different issues. Multi-use spot zoning, is there any taxes being paid or is it all being paid by the church? These are all valid issues that need to be addressed. So I'm for, I'm certainly for sending it back to the Planning Commission and the Planning Department to try to answer some of these questions and then bring it back without an additional application fee. But that's about as far as I could personally go today.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, staff has indicated that the applicant has withdrawn the application for a future land use change at this point. So really, there's no action to take on that matter. As far as the rezoning, I believe the agreement between staff and the applicant was that staff was recommending that the rezoning matter be remanded to the Planning Commission.
And you couldn't legally rezone it because it wouldn't be consistent with the comp plan
Right, so...
at this point with the application withdrawn. So it could be remanded back to the Planning Commission or actually, I guess, stayed until we come back. If the staff brings back a larger area, we could readdress the zoning at that point.
Couldn't the applicant just, at this point, withdraw both of the applications and then work with staff and hopefully get, address some of these issues and then bring it back before the Planning Commission?
Yes. Yes, that is...
Mr. Brown, Mr. Chairman, if he withdraws, won't he have to pay a new application fee to start again?
No, not at this. If he did it before the hearing, we would not require another additional.
And since you haven't had the hearing on the rezoning yet, that should be okay. So at this point, since the applicant is doing that, from what I understand, there really is no further action necessary by this board at this time.
Are you agreed with this? Okay. That's the end of this one. Next is actually future land use. Mr. Brennan?
Mr. Chair, and if it pleases the board, today we have an application for a small-scale land use change from agricultural two to commercial on a parcel totaling five point zero eight acres. The address is eleven fifty-one North Highway seventeen, Palaka, Florida. Here's an aerial of the site outlined in blue. It's an undeveloped lot in the Bostwick area. Here are the existing future land uses. As you can see, the existing parcel is Ag two, but directly to the south, you have commercial future land uses, which I think, you know, the last application was a good exercise of understanding the issues of spot zoning, future land use compatibility. Here you can see that to the south, we do have commercial future land uses abutting the parcel. This would look like if the board moved today to approve the future land use change from Ag two to commercial. Here is the current zoning district surrounding the parcel. As you can see, it's predominantly agriculture. However, there is some commercial zoning in that area. The land is currently, brief analysis, land is currently vacant. It's adjacent to Highway, North Highway seventeen, also subject to rezoning requests, which is the next application. Existing land use designation of A two limits commercial uses to uses that are directly related to agriculture. The change to commercial will allow commercial uses by right. The property is directly accessible to North Highway seventeen, which is classified as a principal arterial. North Highway seventeen has adequate available capacity to meet any demand generated by development on the subject property. Potable water will be provided by private wells. Wastewater will be treated by permanent onsite septic tanks. And Planning Commission recommended approval in its September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting. And that was a unanimous approval. Recommendation, the requested land use change from Ag two to commercial meets the locational requirements for the commercial land use and policy A one nine three five of the comp plan. There will be no adverse impacts to infrastructure resulting from development on the subject property. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested land use change from Ag two to commercial. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, what makes this case any different from the last case?
Sure. So the last case, we had a request from an Ag, a future land use to commercial, and it wasn't compatible with the surrounding future land uses. You had no commercial within, I think it was, we talked about a mile to the north, a mile to the south, and the one in the south was a different county. Here, as you can see, the existing future land uses to the south are predominantly commercial.
Because this is one of our corridors for economic development in the county.
Correct.
Again...
It's a rural center.
Right. So we're going to see more and more of this.
That's correct.
You know, we really have got to look at these corridors when we start looking at this future land use map. Thank you. That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Any comment from, that approves this?
The applicant, next?
Yes.
Please.
Is the applicant here?
I don't see the applicant.
Okay. Well, with that said, is there anyone who's... Anyone speaks in favor of this? Anybody speaks not in favor of this? Seeing none, then we move for deliberation.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Brennan, I just want to make sure you've just, we are going from Ag classification to C three, not four.
Well, that's for the next case, the rezoning. This is for the future.
I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. I'm getting ahead of myself.
No worries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second. We have a proper first and we have a second. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, so moves.
All right. So this is the concurrent application, R seventeen zero zero seven. Same parcel of land, applicant Craft Real Estate Solutions. This is a request for zoning district change from agriculture to commercial, sorry, general C three on a parcel totaling five point zero eight acres. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for outside storage, used car lot and/or mini-storage. Again, the location's eleven fifty-one North Highway seventeen. Again, an aerial of the parcel, undeveloped. Existing future land use, we just changed that to commercial. Proposed future land use, which is commercial. Current zoning of agriculture. And the proposed zoning district. I kind of blew this out a little bit, so you could see the existing zoning in the area. It is in the Bostwick commercial area. There are commercial properties to the south. So staff finds that this would be compatible with the surrounding land uses, especially if it meets the requirements of Land Development Code for buffering and things of that nature. Comprehensive plan consistency, now that has been redesignated commercial, neighborhood commercial development and community commercial development uses are permitted, essentially. Existing zoning of agriculture is to implement Ag one and agriculture two land use classifications. The proposed uses wouldn't be allowed in that zoning district. The proposed zoning of commercial, general C three, would allow for a mixture of light, medium-intensity commercial uses. The applicant, again, has proposed storage and a used car lot sales. Assuming the future land use has changed to commercial, then the C three zoning district would be consistent with that future land use designation. The proposed uses are permitted to uses in the C three zoning district, but not in the zoning of agriculture. Parcels have direct access to Highway seventeen. Traffic will not pass through established neighborhoods. And according to the traffic circuit, circulation element of the comp plan, Highway seventeen is at an acceptable level of service. Parcel's not in a flat plain, does not contain wetlands. It's appropriate commercial infolocation. The proposed use will be located on sites that have direct access to paved roadways. The proposed use is accessible to the intended market or service area, and the type of commercial uses and site development standards are further subject to regulation by the Land Development Code. Findings and recommendations, staff finds that the proposed zoning is consistent with the comp plan, consistent with the locational requirements for C three zoning, and compatible with the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agricultural to C three, commercial, general. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before we get to that point, since this is a rezoning matter, if I can have, the commissioners indicate whether they've had any ex parte communications with any interested parties and if those communications have swayed your decision in this matter.
I'll start. I've had none.
I just spoke with staff about it.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you. And just for a point of information on the rezonings, one of the things that staff brings up in these is what the applicant is intending to use the property for. However, it's important to remember that the decision should not be based upon that specific use, but rather all the uses that are allowed within that zoning district.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Manning, for saying that, because that was my two questions, is we're not really allowed to know that.
Well, you could know it, but it's not something that you already use in considering whether to approve or deny.
But he could change, the applicant could change to anything that fits inside that zoning district.
Absolutely. And that's why.
We had a case over in East Palaka where we helped somebody, we changed the zoning and helped them sell the building only to get something that we might not have wanted there. So we just need to take in account that you opened up the door for everything that fits into that zoning district.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you. I think Mr. Libel had the floor. I'm sorry, Mr. Libel.
No, you're good. I would like to add to that, but of course, the next option is to civil court. There still is an option. It just goes out of our chambers. You got me off track.
I'm sorry.
I'm worried about the entrance to this. For you commissioners, this is Airport Farms Road. It's soon to be paved, and I'm wondering if this facility is what their plans are.
Correct. So we have not seen a site plan from the applicant. As I said, the proposed uses would fit within the C three rezoning. When they come to develop the site, they would have to go through Development Review Committee. That board's made up of a number of administrative officials, staff from the county, Public Works... That board's made up of a number of administrative officials, staff from the county, public works, planning, Department of Health, FDOT, St. John's Water Management District, various technical advisors. So they would say.
So the applicant does realize this?
Yes, it was made clear to him at the time of application at Planning Commission, and again, today, he will have to access off of Highway 17, or he will not be granted permits.
Okay, that's out of our hands at that point. All right, that's all the questions I have.
I have no further. No more questions? Is the applicant here?
Still not here.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to speak for this? Anyone who wants to speak against this? Seeing none, that's closed. We'll open for deliberations.
I move approval, staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper first and a second, therefore it's moved. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against, say nay. Then it approves.
Okay, the next case, item number ER17-008. Again, this is another zoning map amendment. The address, location's 102 Hollister Church Road, has a dual address in 70 State Road 20. This is a zoning map amendment of the parcel in question, and it has three split zonings from agricultural, commercial, retail, C2, and residential, 2, R2. And the request is to change the entire parcel to one zoning of commercial, general, C3 on approximately 7.19 acres. Again, any use within C3 will be allowed, but the requested purpose of the rezoning is to facilitate the development of passenger vehicle sales, rental, and services. That would exclude auto body repair. Here is an aerial map of the parcel in question, outlined in blue. Future land use. The current zoning districts, as you can see, they're split. The proposed zoning district of C3. Just comprehensive plan consistency, this is in rural center, future land use, that refers you to the policy A193A5C for neighborhood commercial development. It meets that criteria. The existing zoning, we have, again, three different zonings, Ag, commercial, retail, and R2. There is a pretty inconsistent, given its location. The proposed zoning, commercial 3, purpose of C3 zoning is to provide a general commercial zoning district for a mixture of light, medium intensity commercial uses. Staff finds that the property in question is adjacent to State Road 20, which is a principal arterial roadway. The property is currently split zoned, Ag, C2, and R2. Assuming the applicant can obtain legal roadway access from State Road 20 and meet the requirements in the Land Development Code for proposed development, the rezoning would not be an issue, and would bring zoning uniformity to the subject parcel. Just brief analysis, again, pro C3 zoning district would be consistent with the existing future land use designation. Pro's use is permitted, uses in the, uses are permitted in the C3 zoning district, but not in the current split zoning of Ag, C2, and R2. Parcels have direct access to State Road 20. Traffic will not pass through established neighborhoods, and according to the traffic surface elevation plan of the comp plan, it is within the acceptable ranges of level of service. The parcel in question is, does have significant wetlands on it. That would restrict its development. It is in the flood plain, so will need to meet elevation requirements. It's an appropriate commercial infill location, however, the proposed use will be located on sites that have direct access to paved roadways. Its intended market and service area is compatible, and the non-residential vehicle traffic will not pass through established neighborhoods. And further development of the site will be restricted by the standard set forth in Land Development Code. Findings and recommendations, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan, consistent with the locational requirements for 3Z zoning, and compatible with the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Ag, C2, R2, to C3. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, again, if I might, since this is a quasi-judicial matter, it asks that ex parte communications be disclosed and indicate whether or not those influence your decision here today.
I've had none. Just spoke with staff, that's all.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Concerning this piece of property, it seems to have three different zonings right now on there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Why, what gives us heartburn not to, because the backside of this property, which is going south, if you will, is really more or less agricultural looking. Is that where the wetlands are?
Yes, yeah, the wetlands are significantly on the southern portion of that property. They wouldn't be able to develop it unless they were able to mitigate it through DEP. The code currently requires a 25-foot buffer from any wetlands for development's sake.
All right, that kind of answers my question, but I guess my point was, I can see why you'd be to the, to the west, and I can see why you'd be to the north. I just don't see why we'd continue to go so deep into the property to the south.
Sure.
That's, that was my only concern.
The applicant could have requested a split zoning, however, I think for compatibility sakes, and staff prefers to have unanimous zoning on parcels. Not that you can't have split zoning, but it makes things more complicated, not only for the applicant, but for staff as well, for development of the site. Regardless of what zoning it is, he will be severely restricted from developing that area because of the wetlands.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Is there anyone that wants to speak for this? Anyone that wants to speak against this? Then we'll open for deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move R17-008, the recommended action of the Planning Commission to approve this.
I'll second.
We have a proper approval. Proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. So moves.
I want to say nay one time, just to say nay, nay. No, nay, I just like the word nay, that's all.
Our next case is R17-009. Chris Hancock is the owner of the property. He's proposing to rezonate from C2 to C3. This is, the property's outlined in blue there. Half the future land use is commercial, the other half is urban service, which allows, both future land use categories allow, see, any of the commercial zoning districts. The rezoning is basically all commercial. That's how it would be proposed at the end. This is another property that was zoned C2, when C2 was a general commercial zoning district. C3 is now the zone, general zoning, commercial district, and C2 has become a light commercial district. And Mr. Hancock just wanted to rezonate back to where's the general, the location is across from Beck Nissan and Dodge are kind of northwest, and then right across is another car place. It meets the criteria of the future land use zoning of the areas, and is basically a pretty simple rezoning from C2 to C3. Are there any questions by the Board?
Same comment.
None. Just talked to staff.
None.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
I didn't see him.
Is there anyone that wants to speak for this? Anyone that wants to speak against this? Seeing none, we'll move to deliberations.
Move approval, staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. So moves.
All right, I'm back. Seeing how Mr. Sammons was a little more brief than I was. Questions that you have. This is a rezoning request. The applicant is requesting a zoning district change from commercial C2 to C3 on a parcel totaling, totaling 1.38 acres. The purpose of the requested zoning map amendment is to facilitate development of boat sales. The property is located at or adjacent to 100 Georgetown Landing Road. It is also adjacent to 309, County Road 309. Here is an aerial of the photo, outlined in black. You can see Georgetown Landing Road to the west, County 309 to the north. Existing future land use. Rural center, which allows for commercial uses. Current zoning, C2. The proposed zoning of C3. Comp plan consistency, commercial uses are allowed and the future land use of rural center. The existing zoning would not allow the proposed use, which is boat sales and service center. Analysis, the future land use category of commercial, rural center is consistent with the proposed C3 zoning district. The proposed uses are permitted, uses in the 3Z zoning district. Parcels have direct access to County 309, and that is acceptable level of services. The parcel does, not in a flood plain, does not contain wetlands. Appropriate commercial infill location, I believe it was previously used as a commercial use, and the commercial uses surrounding, it make it consistent with the neighborhood. Findings and recommendations, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan, consistent with the location requirements for C3 zoning, and compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff therefore recommends approval of the requested to amend zoning map from Ag to C3. I'm sorry, I apologize, C2 to C3. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Manning?
Again, I'd request any ex parte communications be disclosed at this time, and indicate whether or not your decision can be based upon what the evidences you've heard here today.
I have none, counsel, and yes, I can. I spoke with staff, and I also briefly spoke with Robert Boyd about this, and then the future owners, just briefly, and it will not affect my decision.
I have none.
I've had none, and it will not influence my decision.
I've had none, other than to hug one of the owner's neck a little while ago in the meeting.
Thank you.
We did not discuss the case.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak for this? Anyone who wants to speak against this? Seeing none, we'll move to deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of staff recommendations on R17-010.
We have proper motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. So moves.
Mr. Brennan? Commissioner Mike Brown, Planning Development Services. The next and final item that Planning Development Services has for you today is VS17001. This is a vesting application. County staff has initiated this, this application. The request is to vest a portion of what was known as Ninnell Farms 1 and the Hillside Estates, both are unrecorded subdivisions, and vest the properties, parcels in that area to allow, for, for the density and for allowed uses and the issuance of permits. The parcel, the project area is located east of County Road 315, approximately two miles north of County Road 310, and three miles south of Highway 20. Here is an aerial showing the outline of the area in question in red. Those are the parcels as they are depicted today. And running through, the blue, running through the north-south through the parcel, through the project area is Gum, I think it's Gum Creek. The future land use over the entire area is Ag 1, and the zoning is agriculture. Just a background of the history of this area in question. Back in 1980, the owner, Mr. Art Ninnell, had approximately 1,300 acres that he put up for sale through the land auction. What we are talking about today in, for the vesting, is approximately 560 some odd acres of that area. County records never had any map. The only map that county staff could locate was the auction map for the entire 1,300 acres, broken down, which had identified the Ninnell Farms area at that time, the Ninnell Farms 1 unit, as 642 acres. Mr. Ninnell went through the, the auction, sold parcels. Subsequent to the sale by auction, some of the property owners within the area in question today began to subdivide their properties and resell. The county at that time placed a moratorium on the issuance of permits for that area. Then in October of 1980, the county authorized issuance of permits based on some required drainage improvements being commenced for the area, and that was the requirement of the county subdivision regulations at that time. In 1984, the Board of County Commissioners waived the replating requirements for lots 26 and 27 within the Ninnell Farms 1 area, and that became known as Hillside Estates. Again, when they waived the replating, there was no recording or no map ever submitted. So throughout this time, there's no indication of what the configuration of the lots were within the area. In 1991, the Board of County Commissioners voted to remove Ninnell Farms Unit 1, lots 26 and 27, which is the replatted subdivision of Hillside Estates, from a hold list on the issuance of permits, allowing for permits to be issued. And then, as you were aware, in 92, the county adopted its comprehensive plan, which included the designation of, of land uses over all the property in the county. This area, they designated Ag 1 with a density of one dwelling unit per 10 acres. Subsequent to the adoption of the future land use map, there was further, property, parcels were further subdivided, some of them meeting the density requirements, some of them not. And then in '06, the county actually approved a lot split within, within the area for a portion of it. And I go over all this because it fits into the criteria set forth in the Land Development Code and the comp plan for determining a vesting. Just one more point that staff would like to point out is, all the roads within the project are just, are ingress egress easement over private property. Roads within the, within, that provide access to all the parcels within the area are private and not public at this point. The Land Development Code sets criteria for vesting in Section 902-06B. It allows for vested rights to certain developments of parcel or parcels if the following criteria are met. One, there was some act or omission by the county indicating that certain development of, of the parcels would be allowed. The property owner or owners, in this The property owner or owners, in this case, relied in good faith on this act of omission by the county, and the result of the reliance, the property owner made substantial changes to position or incurred obligations and other expenses that would make, be highly inequable and unjust to deny the owner to further develop in a manner consistent with the county, with the act or omission of the county. There's also in the comp plan, policies that allow for the determination of vesting and set forth how that is to be addressed, and the first paragraph is, proposed development of the parcel must have been legal at the time of the county's act or omission, and the mere purchase of a parcel in reliance on then existing rules and regulations is not a determinant of reliance for the claim of equitable estoppel. That's set forth in the comp plan. And staff's analysis is, since 1981, there's been various holds, and the removal of those holds over the timeframe, since 1991. County has records that indicate, that show the Public Works Department approving drainage work in the development, which was the basis for the county authorizing permits over those years. There was never a plat or configuration of lots within the subject area. Presently, approximately 50% of the parcels are developed with residential development. And the county has authorized a lot split and reconfiguration back as recently as 2006 within the boundaries of the subject area. There are some additional things in, I believe it was after the '04 floods, the county actually went in there and did some work on the road, even though it was private because the drainage, and improved some of the drainage on its own accord. So there has been a number of actions that the county has taken that staff believes have led the property owners to believe that they could continue to and rely on the issuing of permits. And those property owners have acted on that. Staff concludes that because of those actions, that the Ninnell Farms Unit 1, which includes the Hillside Estates re-subdivision, which are, again, were both unrecorded, meets the vesting criteria for the existing 65 parcels as they're depicted today, which was in the map I showed earlier. And staff is recommending that those 65 parcels be vested as they are today, with the condition that the roads and the drainage remain the responsibility of the owners of the parcels and not be encumbered or be the burden of the county. One of the issues, as I stated earlier, they are private property, there's no public works. The previous director had started the attempt to acquire those and contacted all the property owners. And there was not a universal decision or on the, all the property owners to agree to donate their property there right of way, so those roads would become public. So with that, staff believes it should be their responsibility then to maintain the roads and the drainage and not be a burden on the county. So with that condition, staff is recommending the vesting so that they, those individuals who haven't developed could obtain permits to develop their property consistent with the future land use designation of Ag and with those uses allowed within the Ag zoning district. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I might again, sorry. Vesting determination is also a quasi judicial matter, so I would ask for disclosure of any ex parte communications and whether or not you're able to make a decision today based upon the evidence heard today.
Commissioner Leibl?
No, and yes. I just spoke with staff, and yes, I'm ready to make a decision.
Yes, I've had none, and yes, I may.
I have had many, but since staff initiated the request, I can make an impartial decision.
I've had none.
Thank you, and sorry for interrupting.
Mr. Chairman, may I make, Mr. Brown, I want to say thank you. This came to me many, probably, years ago, and it came to me from Mr. Whittington and Mr. Harris, who were trying to sell lots, and I went to you and Mr. Hammond with this problem, and in your wisdom, you said, let's clean up this whole area once and for all. I appreciate that, and thinking outside the box, Mr. Hammond and you, Mr. Brown, to clean up this thing once and for all. Now, the roads are an issue, but they know that, they're private roads still, and they'll have to be brought up to standards if the county ever decides to take them over. But this is an opportunity for the county to see a problem and go, we're going to clean this up, and not keep allowing these little splits and things to happen. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know other people are going to thank you, but this is a step in the right direction, and the county is, you know, we always hear that we're not proactive. This case, we are going proactive now, and we're cleaning it up. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
I'd like to point out, and I concur with you, Mr. Harvey, that this is Putnam County's challenge in a nutshell. All these subdivisions that predate land development codes in 1992 are what keep us, our Public Works Department, just inundated with requests, but this is the correct way to deal with it. And I too commend staff for your actions here, and I think that this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience?
Yeah, they're right there.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak for this? Anyone in the audience that wants to speak against this?
A gentleman for it.
I would like to speak, I don't know if I'm for or against it.
Please come forward and state your name and your address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Name is Claire Hood, reside at 234 Bayo Bab Trail. Got, received a notice in the mail about a vesting determination. Spent, I don't know, hours trying to figure out what vesting determination was. I made phone calls, there was somebody on vacation, somebody was sick, and nobody could give me any information. Finally, I got hold of someone in, I guess it was the planning office, that said they would call me back. Never got a call back. I made a phone call to the Board of County Commissioners and talked to one of the staff members, I guess, and said they were going to pass this information to you, Mr. Goddard, but I don't know if you ever got the information or not. I don't know what vesting determination is, I don't know what it does for the property owners. We have a mess back there with the roads. There's drainage, culverts have not been put in, have not been maintained. The water runs down the road, washes it out. We had the culvert there at Gum Creek on Oak Ridge Drive that washed out over half of the road. I made several phone calls, talked with people in the, I guess, the building, the road department. I talked to, I called Board of County Commissioners because it's, I mean, the St. John's Water Management District, because Gum Creek, you know, isn't, I don't know if it's a navigable water, but I'm sure it comes under their control. Made a phone call to the fire rescue, whatever department that is, and told them, you know, if you had to bring a fire truck down there, or if you had to bring a rescue unit down there, chances are there's culverts wouldn't hold, and you're going to lose a truck. We had, I don't know, three or four visits from people in the county that looked at the road and said, you're right, it's in bad shape, it needs to be fixed, but it's a private road. Then there was an agreement that they would repair that culvert for access for county services such as garbage truck, fire rescue, and they come in and put in two new culverts and paved, or not paved, but put dirt over it, and I made a visit to, I guess it was the planning department, talked with the gentleman in the blue shirt, that the road was washing away. We had two big rains, and the culverts, the water's running down the road and washing the culvert out. The next day, they came in and sandbagged that area, and that's fine now, but the other side is washing away, and the signs they put up, the blinking yellow lights are still there, there's a drop off of about eight or 10 foot in that area. So if somebody come down that road at night, there are no lights down there. They get off a little bit, they could wind up in the creek. When I got this letter for vesting determination, I assumed that the county was going to move because Charles Litzel and myself was working with the county to get deeds prepared for the, all that property on that road, and I was under the impression that the county was going to take over the road, and the gentleman in the blue shirt told me, no, that's not going to, we're recommending against that. We're not looking for a paved road in that area, but there's a lot of elderly folks, including myself, I'm almost 70 years old, and they have medical issues. The road is nearly, I'm not going to say impassable, I have a big truck, so I can get through there, but the road is in real bad shape because there are no culverts along several properties there, and no ditches, and all the water runs into the road and washes the road out. Again, I don't know if I'm speaking for or against vesting because I don't understand what the vesting does. If the vesting is so the county can eventually take over that road and not pave it, if they would just come in and grade it and fix the ditches or get the property owners to put in culverts that are not there, I had to put in a culvert when I built my home there, but there's other properties there that have no culverts. So the water just washes out into the road and washes the road away. So I would like to know what vesting determination does.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
First, let me apologize if you called Planning Department and didn't get a response. I apologize for that. And I don't know why that happened, but I wanted to apologize first for that. The vesting will allow those property owners within that area to obtain permits to develop their parcels, consistent with the zoning right now, which is Ag. So they, right now, a number of our neighbors, some of them on Bayo Bab, cannot pull a permit to build a house because of, because it's an unrecorded subdivision that was never vested. So that's primarily what the vesting will allow, allow them to be able to develop their parcel with residential unit or with whatever agricultural use would be allowed under that zoning district. The vesting will not address your issue on the roads. My understanding in talking with the Public Works is that although a number of the property owners have agreed to the donating the right of way for the roads from their parcels, there is not universal consent to do that. And Public Works can't pick and choose where they're going to do the roads. They've got to have everybody, all your neighbors, 100% commit to donate the right of way, or they can't do anything about that. So the vesting doesn't address that. It doesn't prevent that from in the future, if you can get universal support from all your neighbors to donate the right of way for the roadway, then you could petition the county to take those, take the roads over at that point, but this vesting would not address that at all. I don't know if that's clear or not, I tried to make it as clear as you can.
It is to an extent, but Mr. Litzel and I, I understand the county prepared the deeds for the properties along Queen's Country Road and Oak Ridge Drive.
And I can only tell you, I spoke with the director, the new director of Public Works. He indicated that, and the county did, but you, your neighbors have not all agreed to donate those right of ways to the county. A number of them have, but not all of them have.
From what I understand, there was only one individual that owns two pieces of property who is sick with cancer and probably dying someplace in Tennessee, but that everybody else had signed the deeds.
I, I mean, I'm just telling you what, my discussions with the Public Works Director, what he indicated, he did not have all the deeds in hand, and until that point, there's, at least county staff couldn't recommend that the roads be taken over by the county.
Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt, but if it's the interest of the commission, it'd be more, you know, staff will look into the issue of the roads out there as far as the, those folks that are given permission for right of ways or not. We can discuss that at a later meeting when we can actually have the Public Works Director and get that paperwork gathered up so we'll know who has and who has not. I'll be more than happy to work with the gentleman here to assist him in whatever issues he may have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind too, sir, we have looked at different roads throughout this county, and I'm going to get off roads really quick because this is not what this topic is about, but some of the areas require 66 feet of right of way. We have looked as a county of maybe requiring less right of way, which would maybe encourage people to give us right of way. Some of the areas where you live, I hunted that area, okay? Does it need 66 feet of right of way? Maybe not. So we're looking at different areas and different criteria for those areas that might encourage people to go, let me sign this paper now, but that doesn't guarantee you, just because everybody does that, that we're going to take over the roads. But that gives you a hope, and that's what we want to do today, is get this property vested properly, get it where people can sell and build and do things that need to happen, and then let's start working on the roads. So that's going to come into the future, okay?
From my perspective, and I've got one other person here in the audience that lives on Bayo Bab, transiting Queen's Country Road is not a problem. Transiting Oak Ridge Drive is a major problem. I don't know who I need to go to, what I need to do to, or who I need to talk to in the county. Like I said, we're not looking for a paved road. We would like to see some kind of improvement of the drainage to keep the water from running down the road and washing it out.
Okay, if, because it is the roads, Mr. Suggs has already volunteered that he would get with you and with Public Works and start you on the process of getting those roads done, but it's just a process.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. You need to, please come forward and give your name and your address.
My name is Bill Harris, and I own property on Bayo Bab Trail, and I am definitely in favor of the vesting. I do understand it, having been in government 30 years. I want to thank Mr. Hammond and Mr. Brown, they met with me, talked to them at length on trying to solve this problem. I do understand Putnam County and its history from a governmental point of view, and you do have an issue that you are dealing with, and I do appreciate it. I do not understand how people want to be elected officials because it seems like all you do is take abuse, and for not a lot of thanks. it seems like all you do is take abuse, and for not a lot of thanks, but I'm here to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Will there be any others wanna speak for or against? All right, with that, we'll move to deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take staff recommendations to approve VS seventeen zero zero one.
Okay, we have a proper motion, a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Okay, so moves. Now, next, next will be appointments. Okay, um, anyone have any appointments?
I have none.
None?
I have none.
Okay, I do have, I have, uh, for the Affordable Housing Committee, I have Martin Crosswith.
Yes, sir.
Oh, could you, uh, excuse me, sir, could you all take that outside? Thank you. Um, well, I'll have our county administrator up on the floor.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I have one item that's on the agenda today, and I have one that is not. Uh, the item on the agenda is an interlocal agreement with the City of Palaka for administration permitting inspections and enforcement as required by the Florida Building Code. Uh, we discussed this, uh, a week ago at our workshop. Uh, we have had staff get together with the City of Palaka as, uh, and work on a, an interlocal agreement. We have Mr. Reynolds, the interim city manager here today from Palaka, as well as, uh, Kevin from our building department. Uh, so, uh, the staff is recommending that we, uh, we approve this interlocal agreement, uh, to provide services, building services for the City of Palaka, but they're both here today to answer whatever questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, may I? It is my understanding that the City of Palaka is gonna be losing their, um, building official pretty soon, and there's some projects that are sitting out there, and they came to us asking us for help, and Mr. Powell was more than gracious to do that and work out an agreement. Is that correct, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. Matt Reynolds, interim city manager, finance director for the City of Palaka. Uh, Commissioner, you are correct. Um, our, uh, part-time contractual building official, Mr. Nelson, um, gave us a, a thirty-day notice, um, several weeks ago, and we do have several projects, uh, in the pipeline right now, Burger King, uh, Dollar Store downtown, um, I believe some improvements out at the hospital, and so, um, thank you guys for, uh, entertaining, uh, the, the idea of, of executing an interlocal with the city to provide those services for us. I think it'll be a, a win-win for both the city and the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Reynolds, at our workshop the other day, you were in a position where you weren't sure exactly where this was gonna go. Are you a little further along with that decision process you had? I mean, is this gonna be a short-term interlocal agreement? You're not quite sure yet what direction it's ultimately gonna go? Um, where are you at with that now?
Well, right now, uh, in discussions with, uh, the, the county administrator and, and county staff, uh, I think for now, uh, the best course of action will be for us to utilize this interlocal, uh, for several months while I discuss with my staff the potential of, um, getting another building official. From what I understand, it may be a very difficult thing to do to find somebody with all of the, uh, different certifications and, and that is able to administer the Florida Building Code. With the workload that the city would require, it only, uh, Bruce, I think, had been averaging about twenty hours a week. I think it's gonna be difficult for us to find, uh, one individual person that has all of that and is really only looking for about twenty hours a week. So, uh, at this point, I think, uh, short-term wise, uh, the interlocal would be best, and, uh, in discussions with staff, uh, if this does turn into something longer term, uh, we would be looking at revising that interlocal agreement in order to do that.
I'm assuming that y'all worked out some kind of a, a, a financial agreement between the city and the county that's suitable?
Uh, y- yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Uh, we are actually, my apologies, I should've had the interlocal on your dais this morning, and I failed to do so. Uh, we are having it delivered as we speak, so, uh, it's a, I think it's a three-page document. Yes, sir, we've worked out the cost, uh, we've worked out the hours. Uh, uh, our building official is going to, uh, put in place a spreadsheet to track the hours that are spent, uh, providing services on behalf of the city. If we go over the threshold of the hours within the interlocal agreement, there is additional fees to be charged back to the city for those costs as well. Uh, again, it's a, uh, uh, I believe it's an interlocal that benefits, uh, both the, the city as well as the county. Uh, one of the, uh, benefits, uh, that was discussed by our building official, um, Mr. Powell, was that it gives our building officials an opportunity to work on things other than the residential and, and, uh, uh, remodeler-type projects. It gives them an opportunity to do more commercial work, 'cause there's more commercial work being, being, uh, constructed within the city limits of Palaka, which gives them an opportunity to do some, uh, continue that as well as on-the-job training for those type of, uh, of, of projects. So, again, I think it's one of those mutual benefit, uh, interlocal agreements, so that's gonna be, uh, very helpful for both. Again, my apologies for not having interlocal on your dais this morning. I'm hoping it'll be here any minute.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the building official to come up to the podium?
Why, certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell, I realize that during our workshop, you were at a, you were completing your military obligations that you have, and for that, I appreciate it, but, um, since you've been back, you, you just got back yesterday, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, have you had enough contact through this process that you feel good about what's going on, and that you feel good about this agreement? Because after all, it's gonna be you and the, uh, city.
I've, I've been in constant contact with the office on this. I've made some changes to it while I was away. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, and, uh, I, I feel it's a, a good path for us to bridge a gap between the county and the city, uh, to, to assist them, and, uh, what it leads into in the future may be, may be better. Um, but, yeah, I'm, I am good with it.
Does anything in this agreement put us working for the city's planning staff?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you feel like the level of, um, the level of remuneration that we're getting from them is adequate to cover our costs, and, and also to move forward, or?
Yeah, it, it, it does cover, uh, our costs. Uh, we just basically take what our fee schedule is and the hours, and we put those together and came up with the dollar amount. Anything over those hours, and of course, there's a, a charge for that, which is written out in the agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, Kevin, do you feel with the staff that you have, you have adequate staff to be able to take care of the county's, um, inspections and work with the city without delaying, you know?
Yes.
The city's, uh, uh, inspections are the county's?
Most of the work in the city is gonna be done by the, the office staff here. Leo, Don, and myself will cover down on the city. Um, I know they go by a number of inspections. They may have twenty inspections, but it might only be three stops. We, we base ours off of how many stops we do. So, covering the city for us, since we're here, is gonna not be a problem. And then, of course, the staff in areas that they're, they're currently working, it's not gonna change.
When does this agreement start?
With your approval here this morning, as well as the, uh, city's approval at their next scheduled, uh, or special scheduled, uh, city commission meeting.
Okay, when is Bruce leaving?
You'll have to ask Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds, when is Bruce leaving?
I believe his last day for the thirty days is December seventh.
We're gonna have this in place by then, or would he agree for another week if we don't, and are we gonna have it on the schedule in place?
I am anticipating...
You're gonna have to walk up to the back up to the podium, I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds.
Sorry, I apologize. Um, I am anticipating the city commission calling a special meeting, um, potentially next Monday to adopt this interlocal agreement so that it will be in place.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I have one concern, Mr. Powell, and I, probably, you probably haven't had a chance to listen to the workshop, but taking off your county hat, putting on the city hat, we don't want our phones to ring based on the fact of what the city building requirements are. So, are you able to take off that hat, put on the City of Palaka hat, put on a city car, and go out there to a city inspection and be the city and not make our phones ring going, "Why are y'all holding up this process?" That was my concern.
No, that, that won't be an issue.
Okay.
Um, you know, everything is still gonna go through the city.
Right.
Uh, we're just going to pick up their inspections.
Good.
So, all calls are gonna go back to them. We're just gonna be covering down on their inspections.
Get your City of Palaka hard hat.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service, Torque.
Thank you.
That's all the questions I had, sir.
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, if it's, uh, if we could, on page nine, uh, number nine is the commencement date. If we could, if there is a motion here this morning to approve the interlocal, if we could just go ahead based on information provided by interim city manager, Mr. Reynolds, uh, that they're gonna hold a meeting on December, uh, seventh?
On the fourth.
The fourth, okay. Uh, that we have, uh, a, a commencement date, uh, to follow thereafter, which will be December fifth, if we, so, or, or December eighth, actually, with Bruce's last day being the seventh. So, if we could do that, have a commencement date of December eighth.
So, the motion would include, um, uh, approval of the, um, interlocal agreement with the insertion of the date December eighth, twenty seventeen, on page five, paragraph nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the interlocal agreement as stated with an effective date of December eighth.
Second.
And we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in...
All those, sir, I'd like some discussion on if we could, Mr. Chairman.
Then it's open for discussion.
The discussion that I would have, if the city doesn't approve this on the fourth or whatever, I say that we got to start from scratch. I mean, I'm, I'm into being a good neighbor and doing anything I can, but if they decide they don't want it, then I, whatever.
I'll amend my motion based on approval of the City of Palaka. Will you amend your second, Mr.?
I'll second your amendment. I can second your amendment.
Yes, but I want an addendum to it.
The floating dock, you put in there, they owe us a floating dock.
Our dock, that's true.
Yes, I do.
So, so the motion and second is approval, um, with the commencement date of December eighth contingent on approval by the City of Palaka.
Exactly, and it's been, it's been accepted by Commissioner Laube and Commissioner Turner.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. So, it moves.
All right, uh, Mr. Chair, if I would, uh, just one last thing. Uh, today is a, a date that Mr. Hammonds, as well as Miss, Mr. John Sammons, this is their last meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, and I think it would be a remiss of us if we didn't congratulate both of them on their pending retirement, let them know how much we appreciate everything they've done for this community over the years, and how much we're going to miss them, but also wish them both, uh, much success and happiness in their next, next endeavor.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, if I could chime in on that and just say that, um, you know, the time that I've been here with the county, it, it's been an honor working with both of these gentlemen. Um, I, I know Mr. Hammonds is, is, uh, has worn many different hats and, um, has, uh, had to deal with a lot of very stressful, uh, difficult issues, and I think he's done it, um, very well with professionalism, and the same thing with Mr. Mr. Sammons. Boy, he's been here for, for many years, and also, um, from what I understand, he's worn, he's worn many hats and worked through many difficult situations, and, and both of them have, um, been very responsive, um, to questions that I've had and, and, and assisted me in, in working through, um, you know, issues in their departments, and I just wanna thank both of them, uh, from the bottom of my, of my heart, and, uh, wish them the absolute best, um, going forward. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chair, if I could chime in also?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say to both of you, I've worked with you a decade now, and it's been nothing but a pleasure. It really has. Well, no, maybe not you, Brian, sometimes, but, but no, no, your, your, your intelligence, um, and, and, uh, your just persistence in, in trying to make this county what it should be is really evident, and, um, other than asking you both to volunteer your future retirement with animal control, it's been great. Thank you.
I'd also like to comment. Um, I, uh, have had a relationship with, um, John and Brian for roughly four years. I was on the Planning Commission for a couple of years before I was elected, and, uh, probably more so with, with, both of them have been very professional, um, uh, very approachable, uh, with any questions I had on the Planning Commission, a- and as a, a, a commissioner, I guess that's what I am now, commissioner, and so I just wanna thank them, and, and Brian, it's been a pleasure. Um, uh, and as I said, you've worn many hats. Uh, I really don't see how you balanced, um, uh, what you did, especially when you had to take on, uh, animal control, and, uh, but you've done a very good job, and we'll definitely miss both y'all.
John and Brian, good luck in the future. God bless you. Thank you for your professionalism towards me and the respect that you've always shown me as I go through those hallways over there. So, thank you, and, and just the level of service that you provided to this county and to myself. Thank you very much.
I'll go next. I guess when I first met you guys, you had a little darker hair than you got right now. Worked for them for many years before I became a commissioner, and they've always been very professional, and I think they've always done what they felt was right for the county and for the constituents of it. So, I'd like to thank you for your service, both of you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Manning, do you have anything else to add?
Um, if, if Mr. Suggs has done, no, I have nothing further.
Okay, so, Mr. Laube?
Um, I wanna thank Sam Deputy, Larry Harvey, and Brian Bergen from our staff, and Angela Murtaugh and the Downtown Ink Group for a fine Christmas parade last Friday night. You guys did the lineup. Larry, thank you so much, and Sam is always a superstar, but all involved with that. It just gets bigger and better every year, and it couldn't beat the weather. I don't know what's wrong with, uh, Mr. Suggs' truck, but it wouldn't keep up with us.
We were busy throwing candy out.
Yeah, it was, it's amazing to see thousands of people on St. John's Avenue, and thank you for all that help. That was a great event, and we got many more coming. Crescent City, Weelaka, Interlaken, and Melrose, we're coming your way.
And the boat parade.
And the boat parade on the ninth, that's right. Palaka's riverfront.
Y'all throw candy at the...
Fish food.
Mr. Pickens?
I was gonna say, we, we probably have to make Terry Suggs speed up a little bit, 'cause I think we, uh, about ran out of candy, uh, on that. It is amazing to see the, that parade put together, uh, and the amount of people that, uh, attend that. Uh, Sam Deputy told me a couple of years ago when I was in it, he said, "It'll be three to five thousand people there," and I said, "No way," but, uh, there was every bit of that amount, and the children that were there, um, really appreciated the candy. Um, it's hard to believe that, um, we've completed our first year as a commissioner's buddy, and, uh, I just wanna thank Larry Harvey, uh, for his leadership. He's been a fantastic chairman. Uh, he really helped the, the new commissioners when we came on board, all of you did, um, with, with just, um, you know, maybe asking the questions at a commission meeting or a, a board meet, or a, uh, workshop or transportation that maybe we weren't sure we needed to ask, uh, but he was very helpful to Larry, and I just thank you for your leadership. Uh, also, Buddy, congratulations as chairman, and, uh...
Congratulations to you, too.
And I'm truly honored to be vice chair this year. Um, I wanna thank, uh, all the staff, the department heads, um, that I've had contact with. Uh, you've been very professional. I feel truly that each one of you out there and, and the ones that hopefully can hear my voice that are sitting, uh, in their offices, um, truly have the best interest of Putnam County, um, in their heart, and, and are doing a great job and doing the best they can. So, I'm just truly honored to have completed my first year, uh, and I'm really looking forward to, um, with the appointment of, uh, Commissioner Turner, uh, to fill District Three, and also Terry Suggs coming on board as our county administrator. Just looking for really good things for, uh, two thousand eighteen. That's all.
Well said. Mr. Turner? I don't have any comments today.
Mr. Harvey?
Okay, thank you. Well, as I said before, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve this board and this county in the last year as chairman. We had a lot of things we went through, and... through, and a lot of changes were made, and a lot of knowledge was gained, and on my side, too. And I really am looking forward to the future of Putnam County, and the best days are ahead of us, I believe. And I really thank the governor for appointing Mr. Turner. I think it's going to be a great move on that part, and you've offered a lot already, and I appreciate it. Mr. Suggs, looking for the great return on investment that we did for you, and what we can see going forward in the county, and how we can improve our budgetary stance, and our reserves, and things that we really need to focus in on, and reducing our tax burden on the citizens. Also, I want to remind you of this coming Saturday, the Christmas celebration, December second, in Inalakan. Yesterday, the Rotary Club of Inalakan made thirty-eight-hundred-and-fifty cookies. That's a lot of cookies, folks, and we did it all from nine to four yesterday with the help of Inalakan High School's ovens. And we had, we had a procedure going on, a factory assembly line, if you would. But please come out, six o'clock, the brochure's in your box, and I look forward to seeing you there, and I'll see you in Crescent City at the parade, and then beat it out to Inalakan for the celebration. So, thank you very much.
I want to thank everyone for being here, and I really want to thank Commissioner Libley, Commissioner Harvey. They did help us a lot in the very beginning, because we knew nothing. But they guided us along the way, and I do appreciate your chairmanship for the past year. We're going to miss you guys. I know you're probably going to miss us. But all in all, through the storm, through everything that we've been through, I'm very proud of our county. Our county is very unique, and it is moving forward, and I'm proud to see it. With that, I think we'll have a recess till five oh five. We'll start our five oh five public meeting. I think this is fellowship.
Mr. Suggs, would you like me to take this?
Yes, ma'am. Would you please do the, I'm a little lost at the moment.
Do I have?
Oh, nothing.
This is the budget amendment that you saw two weeks ago tonight. Now, at that meeting, I told you that many counties had an interpretation that you only needed to do this one time, but since it was unclear, to be safe, we did it twice. Well, I explored that further in between that meeting and this meeting, because when I got back from being out of town for the Thanksgiving weekend, I found out that the newspaper did not run our ad Friday morning. Mr. Manning and I spoke. He looked at the statutes, and he determined that we really only need to do this one time. But since we said we were going to do it twice, and we put it in this agenda, the ad ran this morning, and we're here with the budget amendment before you. Other than that, there are no changes from what we discussed two weeks ago. Do you want me to go over all the same information we went over two weeks ago one more time? Nothing has changed. Commissioner Libley had a question two weeks ago, but he spoke with me since, and I think his question has been answered.
Laurie Parker would like to go over the whole thing.
Line by line by line.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
One second.
Okay.
One second. Yes, Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify for the record, yeah, we looked into it further, and for the record, it's Florida Statute one twenty-nine point oh six, sub two F, that allows for, for the amendment to be done following one public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, but at our last meeting, we also told the public we would be meeting today.
That's right. So, I'd have an abundance of caution, and y'all also were expecting to see it again today.
And the agenda showed it. So, we've noticed by the public.
Yep.
So, effectively, we met our statutory requirements two weeks ago tonight, but it's not going to harm a thing to pass this again tonight.
Absolutely. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept resolution for twenty seventeen.
No, that's the wrong.
The wrong one? Budget amendment?
Budget amendment, yeah.
It's a budget amendment.
Looking for the number on here.
Two sixteen dash seventeen.
The copy I have says twenty seventeen dash, because it doesn't get numbered until after it's approved.
That's what I have on here, I think. Okay. Budget amendment for FY twenty sixteen seventeen for two million, four hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars.
Second. Okay, we have a proper motion and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know this is the only item we had on our agenda for tonight, but as we discussed previously, I'd like to request that you make a motion to amend your, your agenda to accept an emergency item regarding the Melrose Christmas Parade.
Okay. I'll move that we have an emergency item for the town of, I mean, there is no town of Melrose now. That's a typo in there. The community of Melrose.
We'll fix it.
It's not a town.
We'll fix it.
So, okay.
What this is, Mr. Chairman, is an authorization, it's a resolution for the county commission to authorize signature on the temporary road closure permit in support of the Christmas parade for the community of Melrose.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the community of Melrose to apply for the permit to close the road, portions of State Road twenty-six, and this resolution two thousand seventeen.
All right, I have a proper motion, a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay. Motion moves. With that, is there any public out, any, any public that wants to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. And is there anything, any other business we need to bring forward? With that, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.